January fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the school committee will come to order. As is our tradition, please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and our country.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a few additions on the agenda and a couple of sequence changes. Under chairman's report, I'd like to do five-year financial projections first, which is first. Second, I'd like to talk about the budget planning meetings that we've had with the Board of Selectmen Chair and the Warren Committee Chair and the outcomes of those two meetings. Next, I'd like to talk about the fiscal sixteen budget cut and reduction list. And then fourth, do town school consolidation committee. Also, I'd like to add an update on some French-English performance data analysis that we had commissioned, and that information is now in, so I'd like to talk to you about when we might be available to meet with Laura O'Dwyer, who did that analysis. Yes?
One other thing, Mr. Chairman. Could we defer the Transportation and Traffic Subcommittee report until the next meeting, when Ms. Bagley Jones will be here?
Certainly. Okay. Ms. Kelly?
One more, I think that we won't be voting on the background checks, right? That'll be first reading?
That's right.
Okay. Great. More, I think we have some people for citizen's speak. Thank you. First, we have Philip Johening. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Come on up. Just state your name and address, if you would. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Philip Johening. I live at twenty-three Parkway Drive in Milton. I attended the selectmen's meeting last night where there was a discussion of the new financial system that was being proposed for the town. And I was wondering about that. I've been in a controller for probably over twenty years. I've been in finance, accounting, treasury, financial planning for thirty-five years. And one of the things I know about financial systems is that you don't just put them in. Usually, it involves a consultant. Usually, the consultant is fairly expensive. And the reason why you need a consultant is the systems are fairly complicated, and no one in the organization knows how to use them. And so, in order to prime the pump, a consultant is usually involved at fairly high cost. I was also concerned about the cost of the systems themselves and the ability of the town to afford that kind of expenditure of about a quarter of a million dollars. So, I guess I started thinking about what other options might exist that did not seem to be evaluated during the study. And one of them is outsourcing to large companies like IBM, Xerox, et cetera. These companies already manage a lot of the administrative functions for towns and cities across the country. And so, and additionally, there's usually a one-time setup charge, but it's usually less expensive than hiring consultants to implement accounting systems. The nice thing about having someone do it outside the town is that all of the, let's say, accounting systems that would be required to provide the horsepower are maintained by that company. So, you know, having someone like IBM maintain servers, cloud access, et cetera, et cetera, is really a big plus. I've been involved in several of these transitions, I'll call it, and I know that I've never seen it done without a consultant from one of the very large accounting firms. I currently work at a startup, a small startup. In the last five years, we've gone from eight million dollars in sales to twenty-five million. And one of the things I thought I would just quickly go through is payroll, which we outsource to -- there are two big companies in the market. One is ADP and the other is Paychex. We use Paychex. And what it enables us to do is to provide to our employees access to systems that they would not have usually in an eight-million-dollar company or a twenty-five-million-dollar company. All of our employees have access to a one-sign-on system where they can go in and check their, let's call it, a pay stub, so we don't have to distribute anything to employees. They go in and they check whatever they want. There are two years of history available. They can print out whatever they want, whenever they want it. They can do it at home, they can do it at work. They also have access to, let's say, 401K, where they can sign up, they can change their contribution levels, they can change their investment options. We also have, like, flexible spending accounts, which they can access through the system, which are administered by the vendor, Paychex in our case. So, you know, what we have is a very, let's say, high-quality system for, let's say, a fairly reasonable monthly fee. Additionally, when the payroll is run, we get a report sent to us, which we just simply upload into our general ledger, so there are no, let's say, interface issues. The vendor designs the report, the report is uploaded, and that's all there is to payroll. They also own and maintain our time clocks. The time sheets are done online, so anyone has the ability to go in, complete their time sheet at home or at work. The time clocks are magnetic strip. They interface directly with the payroll system. So, you know, what I'm trying to get at is there's a tremendous array of systems out there and providers out there, very large. And one of the things that you get, let's say, IBM services, let's say, a thousand towns, whatever system they have is going to be at the top of the demands of those thousand towns, or else they wouldn't stay. And so, what you're going to get is an amazing, let's say, assortment or array of capabilities that people like us would take years to get to. So, you're piggybacking on someone else's development efforts. So, I guess my point is I would urge the committee to also get in touch with some of these large companies that provide services. I retired from American Airlines about six years ago, and we had outsourced all of human resources to IBM, which did an amazing job and gave us that kind of access that I was just talking about, to systems that were, you know, beyond our imagination. And it's just there to use. So, you know, just to wrap up, I would urge the committee to take a look at these options and look at the trade-off. You know, you may pay a slightly higher fee, but you've got someone maintaining your system. You have -- and it's going to be up all the time, because they're not going to let their customers down. They, you know, they're going to continue the development effort, they're going to maintain the software. And usually, software has, you know, some type of fee, annual fee for maintenance. If it doesn't, you know, you're going to have the same situation as we have now, where this software just doesn't keep up with the demands. So, maintenance, annual maintenance fees is also another consideration when you look at systems of this type. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Rabbi Benjamin?
Thank you. I'm Rabbi Fred Benjamin. I'm a Milton resident. I live at twenty-nine Winthrop Street, and I'm also the rabbi here of Congregation Best Shalom of the Blue Hills. So, I'm here, thank you for encouraging me to come, to invite the entire Milton community to Monday night's annual celebration of the life of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. It's going to be at six-thirty to eight o'clock at one-eighty Blue Hill Avenue. That's now the Concord Baptist Church. It's sponsored by the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, where I'm a proud participant. And this year, our theme is getting past initial impressions. What's going on in the United States lately, and really, it's never stopped, is that people often just look at what they see initially and don't take the time to look deeper. And we've had some racially charged incidents in this country, most recently. Again, we can go back a long time, there have been many racially charged incidents. And it's something that we constantly have to be proactive about, constantly teaching about. And this is a teaching opportunity, this is a learning opportunity, and it's a time for us to get together as a town and to say that we're not going to be reactive, we're going to be proactive. We do this celebration every year. So, that's the theme, getting past initial impressions. And this year, we're doing something that we have not done in my experience here in town, and that is we have a keynote speaker. So, the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, we approached Chief Wells. We thought it would be really important for him to speak to the community about how important it is that the Milton police, how much they take to heart the idea of creating relationships, positive relationships with the town, that we are so proud about regarding its diversity, how they teach this, they value it in how they relate to their new officers, in their relationships to all of our community members. And then Chief Wells suggested, you know, we have four people from the Boston Police Department who happen to live in Milton, and Chief Wells was able to get in touch with Superintendent-in-Chief William Gross of the Boston Police Department. He is second in command, he's a Milton resident, and so Chief Wells is going to introduce him, who just found out that he's agreed to speak just last week. And I think it's really important for people in this town, who might be concerned about what's happening, to not just sit at home or talk to their friends and shry about it -- that's a good word, shry about it? Or is that just too Yiddish for you?
[laughing]
Into the wind, but to say it's time to respond, to learn and to grow. And so, I really do hope that representatives of this group, the whole town, come out to the Concord Baptist Church, and let's make positive change happen. And as usual, we have some great components to this. The Milton High Gospel Choir is going to sing. Elementary school singers are going to perform. Always get such great cooperation and partnership with the schools here under the leadership of Mary Gormly. The entire sanctuary, entire building is going to be, I would say, festooned with artwork from all of the schools. We put that up, so people have a chance to walk around. Artwork essays written on this theme, getting past initial impressions. And also, this year, there'll be a piece of artwork from the Milton Academy. We're very happy that they've decided also to participate. Our private school, St. Mary of the Hills, St. Agatha's, as always, they'll be sending artwork and also their liturgical dancers from St. Mary's. And the diversity group from Milton High is going to make a presentation. We are going to announce the four winners of our annual scholarship that the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association gives out to four students to attend a leadership summer program, and then it continues throughout the year. That's sponsored by the INIT program. That was first with the ADL, but it's now under the umbrella of the YWCA. And it's a leadership program about how to deal with issues of diversity in your community. We've been doing that for many years. Our selectmen, our chaired selectmen, Katie, is going to read the No Place for Hate, lead us all in the No Place for Hate Resolution, and also a proclamation by the selectmen. If you were there, I guess they approved that last night at the meeting. And for those who know and love Father Peter Casey at St. Agatha's, for many years, he has put on his parable puppets. If you've never seen this, you must come, and this will be his last year of making a touching, genuine, heartfelt message by using these huge puppets. Have you seen them?
I have.
Is it a winner or what?
It's wonderful.
It's wonderful. So, it's really something for everyone. If you just want to come for the food at the end, okay. But I really do hope that we have an especially powerful turnout, because we're doing a lot of the right things here in Milton. And let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. I'd like to ask up the Collicott Site Council to join us at the table. And I would ask Principal Holly Concannon to do the introductions. And welcome.
Thank you, good evening. It's our pleasure to be here, and I want to recognize and thank all the people on the School Site Council for attending tonight, especially the teachers, who have had a very long day, and I appreciate you coming out tonight to help represent the Collicott School. And I also want to recognize Principal Jonathan Redden, who came to support us. We work very well together and closely together every day, so I appreciate your attendance as well. Today, we have with us Amy Gale, a parent and also our curriculum coordinator. We have Maureen Driscoll, a Collicott parent. Gretchen Duffy participates on our council but is not able to be with us tonight. We have Fatima Baras Alzine, a teacher representative. We have Julia Ostrowski, grade three teacher. Patty Facy, also another Collicott parent of our preschool and elementary school. And Margot Tansey, our community representative. Thank you again for coming. We're excited to be here tonight. We do have a nice story to tell at the Collicott School. Many wonderful things are happening there every day. And today, we will highlight some of the wonderful things that happened last year under the leadership of Janice Chan, and with the help of all the parents and teachers currently with us today. So, we are going to start by sharing with you the accountability and MCAS data from last year. We're going to talk a little bit about the goal setting that we have and where we came up with our goals based on the data that we're looking at. We do have some success to share with you, and we have some initiatives that we're going to highlight that happened last year that led us to our success. We also have some focus areas for this year, and we hope to be able to sit here at this time next year and talk more about the success based on the goals that we've set. We have a Collicott School Improvement Plan. We'll share three goals with you today, and then we'll talk a little bit more about the school and go beyond the data, because so many wonderful things happen there every single day. We want to make sure we give a chance to highlight those tonight. So, I'm going to let Amy start. Amy, again, is our curriculum coordinator for math and English Language Arts, and she's going to talk to you a little bit about the accountability from last year.
So, as the proud parent of a Collicott kindergartner and also a proud curriculum coordinator, I feel very fortunate to get to speak to this particular slide. This really highlights the great work that's been happening at the Collicott School over the last year. You'll notice at the top, where the big red arrow is, that it says ninety-three. The Collicott School is in the ninety-third percentile of all elementary schools in the state of Massachusetts, meaning we performed better than ninety-three percent of the schools in the state, which is a really, really high mark for us. You'll also notice at the very top left-hand page of the top-left-hand side of the slide, we are a Level One school, which is, again, a nice feather in the cap of the Collicott School. Looking down the chart, you will notice that there are four blue lines. These blue lines represent our performance. The red dot on each line represents the target of seventy-five progress and performance index points, and you'll notice in all cases, the Collicott School has surpassed the seventy-five as the mark. This is true for all of our students, but then also for the two subgroups that we have at the Collicott School. The high-needs subgroup, which is made up of our English Language learners, our special education students, and our low-income students. And also, we have another bar for our students with disabilities. So, across the board, our students are performing at very high levels at the Collicott School, and that is something for which we are all quite proud.
So, again, we do have quite a bit to be proud of. We also recognize there's a lot of work to do. The next few slides I'd like to share with you will go in more detail about grades and also subjects. You'll notice that this is our grade three MCAS report from last year, and we have English Language Arts and math scores. The red and the blue represent advanced and proficient, and you'll see they take up most of the circle. In English Language Arts in grade three, you'll see that sixty-three percent of our students were advanced or proficient, and that, for us, identifies an area of work. And you'll see that that's one of our goals in our School Improvement Plan. In math, we're at eighty-six percent advanced and proficient students. Again, there's a lot to be proud of, but there's very clear goals to accomplish, and we're working on those this year. In grade four, you'll see, again, another year of experience and a very different group of students. You'll see more red and blue in English Language Arts. Here, eighty-nine percent of our students are advanced or proficient in English Language Arts and eighty-one percent in math. Still work to do. In grade five, this is typically what we've seen in the past few years. This is where we see our students thrive. It is a time for students to show off everything they've learned from kindergarten. It's, you know, we have an exceptional grade five team, but we have an exceptional grade four, grade three, grade two, one kindergarten and preschool team as well. And all the work seems to come to fruition in fifth grade with amazing, amazing scores. So, again, we're very proud of every single grade, but we have identified certain areas that we would like to work on.
One of the things also to chime in upon, although our numbers are very high for students in the advanced and proficient categories, a lot of the work that we do with teachers at the school level is identifying the students who are falling in the warning and needs improvement categories and ensuring that there are supports put in place for those students. And as we talk about our goals moving forward, you'll see what some of those supports look like.
So, before we move to the next slide, I just would like to point out, again, very high numbers of advanced and proficient with eighty-nine percent in English Language Arts and eighty-eight percent in math. So, again, we have great numbers in those areas. Again, we're looking at all parts of the circle. The next circle for grade five represents science, and the red and the blue, the combination of the two colors decreases here. Sixty-seven percent of our students are in advanced and proficient, thirty-two percent in needs improvement, and one percent in warning. So, I want to highlight here, although we do see students, more students in the needs improvement and the warning, it should be noted that the Collicott did earn extra credit points for decreasing the number of students in the warning and failing category in science. So, again, you will see science on our School Improvement Plan, but we are seeing progress. Again, we did receive credit for moving students out of warning and into the other categories. So, you will see this also in our School Improvement Plan. So, Maureen's going to talk a little bit about some of the success behind the data in those circles.
So, I get to talk about the success. Collicott Elementary School performed better than ninety-three percent of all elementary schools in Massachusetts. We're a Level One school, exceeding PPI targets in all areas, including high needs, subgroup, and students with disabilities. Seventy-eight percent of all students were proficient or advanced in English Language Arts. And eighty-four percent of all students were proficient or advanced in mathematics. The median student growth percentiles fell well above typical at sixty-seven percent for both math and ELA. And typical growth for any students is between forty and sixty percent, and ours was sixty-seven percent, so this was really a great number. All of our students consistently received extra credit PPI points for narrowing proficiency gaps. High-needs subgroups consistently received extra credit PPI points for narrowing proficiency gaps in mathematics. And our students with disabilities consistently received extra credit PPI points for narrowing proficiency gaps.
We're going to give you some of the initiative for two thousand and thirteen and fourteen, funded by the advancement budget. We had an extended-day support group before school and after school for third grade, fourth and fifth. We increased knowledge of Common Core state standards by purchasing Common Core aligned curriculum material, such as the Colking Unit of Study for Readers' Workshop. Professional development focused on unpacking standards offered to the teachers increased time on task in all classrooms. Grade-level facilitator supported analysis of math data to inform instruction utilizing specific data-driven protocol, an opportunity to develop teachers' leader. Target literacy support, Saturday professional development session to develop familiarity with new literacy materials, and early literacy consultant to work with grade one and two.
So, thank you, because it was because of the advancement budget that we were able to implement many of those initiatives. So, for this year, we definitely have some focus areas. We have some work to do. And the first step is to focus on science and have a full implementation of the new science curriculum with the addition of new Common Unit assessments. This week, grade three, four and five teachers participated in professional development from FOSS Science, where they were able to dig deeper into these beautiful new materials, again, funded by the advancement budget last year. So, now it's unpacking those kits, it's getting into them, and I have to say publicly that I was blown away last week when I spent time in fifth-grade classrooms looking at science. It felt very much like attending something at a museum. The materials were beautiful, the books were engaging, and the technology that came along with the materials had every child so interested, and honestly, I would have spent the day there if I could have. They're really being exposed to the highest quality materials. We are going to increase and/or modify the targeted supports for students, especially those students in the high-needs subgroup. Amy showed you our subgroups, and although we don't have many blue lines, we have many children who fall within those categories. Again, in order to have a blue line, we need thirty of those students in grades three, four and five, so maybe this year, they weren't represented correctly by the blue line. But we do have students in the high-needs subgroup that we have identified and we are offering support for. We are going to enhance the structure for ongoing assessment at the beginning of the year. I remember sitting right here and saying that I was amazed at how much had been completed so far this year, and I'm proud to say, at this point, we are now far beyond where we were last year. We're actually doing those assessments in the kindergarten classrooms right now, and the teachers can't wait to get their hands on the materials. So, again, last year was implementing and learning, and now this year, it's when can we have it, when can we have it, when can we do it? So, we're seeing major progress there. So, we would like to enhance the structure for ongoing assessment for the early grades as well as straight up through grade five. We would like to increase achievement in all areas with special attention to the students in the low-income subgroup. We have identified students in need of support, and we're offering that in as many ways as we possibly can by inviting students to work with teachers in small groups before school, after school, and possibly to participate.
school, after school, and possibly to participate in our Saturday Scholars Program, which will start in January. And our hope is to move students, more students, into the advanced categories in English Language Arts, Math, and Science, Technology and Engineering. So, Patty will talk to you a little bit about our first goal, and that will be to improve
So, yes, Collycutt's first goal is for the Collycutt staff to work to increase proficiency in science for all Grade Five students by implementing the new science curriculum units. The result will be the percentage of students who score proficient and advanced on the Grade Five Science and Technology Engineering MCAS will increase by twenty percent by May of 2017, and the proficiency gap for students in the high-needs subgroup will decrease. The first strategy we have for that is to fully implement an integrated science curriculum aligned with the current standards. The second is to provide professional development in science curriculum and effective practice. And the third, to develop common science assessments and writing prompts for science notebooks. And the fourth is to increase the presence of technology in all classrooms. And we'd like to thank the MFE for providing the smart boards. Every classroom has a smart board at Collycutt now, and the K-2 students have the iPads to use, and the grades three to five have Chromebooks, so it's very helpful.
Our second goal on the school improvement plan is to improve literacy. We will provide, the goal is to provide appropriate targeted intervention and instructional practices, early and often, to increase reading proficiency in all grades. We will work toward every student reading proficiently by Grade Three. The result will be the Collycutt School will increase the amount of students in the advanced and proficient categories and earn extra credit on state testing. So, you can see the five strategies up there. The first one is to fully implement Readers Workshop. And speaking as a Grade Three team member, I feel very fortunate this year to be working very closely with Martha Winneker, who is an outstanding resource and wonderful coach and has provided a lot of support to our team in getting Readers Workshop off the ground. The second one, to provide small group intervention during the school day. With the Readers Workshop model, it allows for lots of opportunity to get to know the children one-to-one during conferences and assess their needs, so we have plenty of time for assessing those needs and then pulling them into small groups based on the needs. The third one, provide appropriate literacy materials for a range of learners. And right now, the Collycutt School has a bookroom that is growing by the day, and just recently, we've been working on a nonfiction unit, and I, myself, and colleagues have accessed extra text to supplement our classroom library, so it's been wonderful. The fourth one, increase technology as a resource for reading material and behaviors. And today, we were just informed that the Third Grade has gotten twenty-five new Chromebooks in Grade Three, so it's a wonderful addition. And the fifth one, include reading groups, intervention and enrichment in CAS and the Saturday Scholars Program that Holly was mentioning. So, it's a great opportunity to reach out to students who need that little bit of extra support.
Our third goal is around support for the development of the whole child. This is Goal Three. The goal for Collycutt staff will be to work to provide instruction, intervention, and extended programming to support academic, social, and emotional growth for all students. The result will be that the Collycutt will be a more inclusive school. In order to achieve this result, we have four strategies or steps that we will focus on. The first one is the use of common language to communicate expected behaviors for all students. The second one is the family outreach program. Collycutt staff will work to include all students and families in school communications and events. Number Three, Collycutt will extend the day for students. This includes Math League, enrichment classes, Box Program, Saturday Scholars, and small group interventions. And finally, we have an ELL program plan to create a more inclusive program. And if you look at the bottom, on the left, is the Veterans Day Program for the school, and then on the right is the After-School Clay Program.
Thank you all. The Collycutt is a very special place, and we talk often at school committee about data and about MCAS and about what's happening for our students in Grades Three, Four and Five, but it's important to recognize that the Collycutt houses many unbelievable programs for students of all ages. We have students as young as three. We have students who are in programs specific to their special education needs. We have a preschool program with four integrated day sessions. We have French and English and Spanish, and we have technology for children of all ages. It is a very special place, and I encourage all of you to come visit at any time to see so many of the great initiatives that you've approved in action. I also want to talk a little bit about the school beyond what happens in the MCAS circles that you saw. For this year, we're going to work very hard to continue to work on the school improvement plan and the three specific goals that we talked about, including developing the whole child and being an inclusive school, meaning we will push as much inclusive support to all students during the school day, and we'll also extend ourselves so that every child in our school feels connected and welcomed and invited to everything that we host at our school. We're excited about the partnership with the Cunningham School and the Saturday Scholars Program that will begin January 24th. Every student in Grade Three and above received an invitation to attend Saturday mornings for three hours to extend their experience with math and English Language Arts, but also to participate in physical education for an hour on a Saturday. We are off to a great start with our after-school enrichment sessions. This is a first for Collycutt School. We started on a very small level just a few weeks ago, and as you saw the picture of the clay class that we had, we weren't really sure what to expect, but we have thirty-one students attending the clay class after school on a Tuesday. And we were very fortunate with the support of our PTO to be able to employ three adults in order for that to be an effective class. So, the art teacher leads the mini lesson, and then we have two other support teachers to make sure that thirty-one children are engaged and successful at the end. We also have physical fitness classes, we have homework help, we have book club for boys, we even have hair bow making for girls. So, there's a little something for everybody, and we saw some of the girls leave with finished products on Tuesday, and it was, they were pretty excited about it. We have, one of the goals I talked about in the beginning of the year was to talk about at Collycutt Academy, similar to what Pierce has done, where we identify a certain group of students to receive consistent support, and we've identified that our largest group of students is in Grade Four, and our largest group of high-needs students is in Grade Four. So, we're focusing some of the resources we have to support our Grade Four high-needs students, and we will have small pockets of intervention groups for Grades Three and Five students identified not only by data but also by teacher recommendation. We have two upcoming science fairs. Bernadette Moonen has been leading the charge, and the excitement is contagious at the Collycutt School. We have everything, you know, from science and technology and kindergarten with our ramps funded by the Monster Dash. We have so many science materials at the primary grades, and we are building and building and building. And we also had just a wonderful PTO meeting Monday night where Linda Stefanik, Collycutt parent, and also Milton High School chemistry teacher came and broke it down very simply for parents. So, I expect great participation in our science fair for students K to Five. We have a Family Resource Night. Again, we'll team up with the Cunningham School in March and offer a Family Resource Night where families can come get support with things from nutrition to math support and also help for social guidance from an adjustment counselor. We have a lunar celebration coming up, which is being planned by our Diversity Committee. We have One Book, One School Adventure Night also being planned by our Cultural and Diversity Committee. We will be celebrating the book, One Hen, and I encourage the community to get to know the book, One Hen, and they have a website that I've included here, onehen.org. It's a wonderful book, and it's definitely sweeping the nation. It's on many of the top-sellers lists, and it's definitely something we'll all know about in the next couple of years. The picture you see here, those are our four Fifth Grade students who were chosen to participate in the All-State Treble Chorus by audition. They were selected, and they're four of twenty-nine Milton students who were selected to attend, so we're excited about that. We have many PTO-sponsored culturels coming up. We had an amazing one right before the holiday break where an author and musician, Nick Page, came, and he celebrated every holiday, every song. He sang in eight languages. By the way, those eight languages were represented in the audience, and for the first time, some of our Fifth Graders heard their language spoken here, and it was by Nick Page. It was amazing. We have many field trips coming up, again, sponsored by our PTO. We'll have some field days in the spring, and we have a list of Grade Five activities getting ready to celebrate there moving on, and one of those will be a talent show, and we're looking forward to seeing, again, the many talents of our students beyond the data. So, I'm very, very proud of the work that's happening. I'm thankful for the leadership of the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, especially I want to recognize Shan in supporting me, making the transition as principal of such a wonderful school. It's easy to sit up here and present such wonderful data, and I applaud you for putting together this team and the amazing staff at Collycutt.
No questions.
I'm always the one to go first for some reason. I had a bunch of questions, and then Holly went through everything and kind of answered all the questions I had, but I just wanted to, one thing, just want, I'll just highlight one of the things you said. There were many things that I just really thought were wonderful, but the identifying students by teacher instead of just test score, I think, is really important, because there are a lot of kids that can, you know, ace a test or at least do well enough that they're in the mid-category at least, but maybe they're struggling in school or there's things that are coming up. And I think that's so important, because it's just one data point, and the teacher sees these students every day and can see things that a test can't record. So, you know, we analyze data all the time from all the schools and look at test scores, and what are you doing with these students that aren't scoring well on the test? But we rarely talk about those students that the teachers can identify as someone that might, they're struggling a little bit now, and if we can identify these problems now and help them now or later on, it'll just be really, you know, solve major problems. So, I think that's just fantastic that you look at that as well.
I think this would be the perfect time to recognize the teachers and the staff at the Collycutt, because they are exceptional for getting to know the students, and as you said, students can have a bad day on a test, and some students can accidentally have a really good day on a test. And our staff is able to identify those students in need, and maybe it's not always academic. And sometimes, a need that's not academic can be addressed in an academic scenario. So, thank you.
Sharon?
Well, thank you for this wonderful presentation. It was, you really captured, again, the whole child when you're talking about each child, and I think that that's such a key component when we look at education today, is to not lose sight of the whole child, as Becky was saying. So, your scores are spectacular. I mean, they're just the envy of every school, and you are to be congratulated on so many levels, because it's not just, I mean, the teachers, obviously, the administration, obviously, but the kids and the parents that work behind the scenes to make that. That data doesn't just happen by accident. It's really everyone working together, so congratulations on all of that work. And it shows with all the parent activities that you have, that you engage them in a way that makes them truly feel like a partner in the work so that they understand and can better help their children than they do be. Congratulated for that. Just a couple, just two questions, actually, or one. On the Support and Develop the Whole Child Strategy 3.3, you talked about extended-day services or possibilities for students. How are those funded? So, you have Math League and enrichment classes, Box, Saturday Scholars, small group interventions?
Sure. So, many of these are funded by the generosity of the PTO. With our after-school classes, we have asked for fifty dollars from participants for six sessions, and so that pays for the classes. However, there have been scholarships offered and awarded, and we have extended ourselves to students that we think might appreciate the invitation. With our Saturday Scholars, there's also a fifty-dollar fee for the three hours, one-time fifty-dollar fee, and that is to cover the cost of the teachers. And, again, it is our hope to be able to encourage and support any child who is willing and interested in attending, and so, again, we will work to make sure. We've identified students who we would like to be there, and we'll find a way for them to be there.
And is the Box Program run by parents?
Yes. We have, so we have many parent volunteers. We've also had amazing participation and training from our physical education teacher. We have a parent now who's just finished the ReBok training and is certified, and he's ready to take that over completely without the guidance of Beth Fahy, although we all would love to see her there as well, because she has an energy that is contagious. But the parents have picked up on that and are very equipped, certified, and prepared to run the program.
And that's after-school or before-school?
Our Box Program is run Tuesdays and Thursdays before school. It starts at 7:15, as does Math League. The spring session for Box is about to begin. We just finished up the winter session, and everybody who wanted to be involved was invited and welcomed. We had plenty of room. I hope to be able to say the same for the spring, but it is a great way to start the day. Children seem to be happier. We also serve a nice, healthy snack after Box before they enter the school day. So, it's just a great way for the parents and the children to start the day. So, we, although there is one leader, there are many parents in the gym, so it's a great way to be involved in school, and, you know, it doesn't always involve the, sometimes what people consider the academic stress of the day. So, there's an opportunity for every type of parent to be involved at the Collycutt.
That's so true. And I think for Box in particular, I think my experience with that is that kids come kicking and screaming at the first few classes, and the parents are saying, "No, you need to go to this," and then the kids are, you know, running to the door to get there after the first couple weeks. So, it's a wonderful opportunity.
Before you leave that, Ms. Sheridan, if you don't mind, would you describe how you're using the advancement money at the Collycutt for extended day or extended year and for viewing public happening at many of our schools? Would you talk about the Math League?
Sure, absolutely. So, the first thing that I will talk about is how we're using the advancement money to support our three goals. And what we have done as a staff is we have identified students in need of academic support, again, based on data, formal and informal, as well as teacher connection with children. And we are, right now, putting together intervention groups that will happen either before school or after school at no cost to the students. So, although our Saturday Scholars Program, we are looking for a fee of fifty dollars, the work in the small groups that will happen for targeted students is at no cost. So, certified teachers who are well-prepared with curriculum materials with the support of our curriculum coordinator will be able to support children who are in need of extra support, and will be using our advancement money that way. And then, if I could speak to you about Math League, we have Math League in Grades Two through Five, and at the Collycutt, and I know it happens at every school, but at the Collycutt, it does happen before school, and it's a chance for children to come together, and they work on the continental math-type problems. Oftentimes, they are continental math past meets. Sometimes, the facilitator will use other materials, but typically, it's the continental math problems from past meets. And what happens is the children come together, and they have an opportunity to look at somewhat challenging problems and figure them out together. They struggle, they talk about it, they draw pictures, they struggle some more, and they typically find the answers before all the adults in the room. And I always challenge the children when they leave feeling somewhat defeated at a challenging problem. I ask them to go home and ask their families to see it, because most adults do struggle. It's just a way of training your mind on how to solve problems. And what I've noticed, for as long as I've been a math curriculum coordinator in Milton, is that the students who attend Math League is that the students who attend Math League always outperform students who don't attend Math League for the obvious reason that they're spending more time on task. And they're doing it in a fun environment. There's often laughter, there's often, you know, this feeling of victory when they're able to complete the problem, and there's a chance to talk about it. And when you talk about math and you struggle with math and you draw math, you understand math. And when that happens, you then enter the continental math meet experience with a much different confidence than someone who hasn't had that experience. We do give the answer keys to any parents who are interested in volunteering. You'll have them the night ahead of time, and it is often a sign of relief when parents receive those. But it does make a big difference. Again, it's another opportunity for parents to be involved. You don't have to be a mathematician, you just have to be willing to facilitate children learning.
And I just had one final thing. I'm thrilled that you're doing One Hen, that's a great book, and the author is a local woman. Have you, is she going to come?
So I will give full credit to planning the night, to our cultural committee. They do an amazing job. This has been in the planning process for over a year. The book was chosen far before the unveiling, which happened in the fall at our One Book One School Night, which, again, the cultural committee put together, and there was also a subcommittee of One Book One School who had a fundraiser at the Boston Winery where it was sold out. There actually was a waiting list for tickets, and that night, the book was announced, and every student in the Collicott School will receive a copy of the book. We have many activities planned to support the book leading up to the adventure night, and during the adventure night, there'll be activities all over our school to support the book. Last year, the adventure night was the Rick and Dick Hoyt Boston Marathon book, so the theme was the marathon, and there were activities in the cafeteria, the gym, and different classrooms. We expect the same, and it will all support One Book One Hen, and we did have authors last year. My hope is that we will this year.
If I can help you make that connection, I'd be happy to do that. She's been to my school.
Thank you.
Mr. Zulis?
So here I go to be the fly in the chardonnay. Just one question. The only outlier in the EMCAST data is the grade three ELA, and I was wondering if there's any theories or any analysis, or if it's just coincidental.
So I'll start, and Amy, please feel free to chime in. So we've identified, most of our advancement money will go to support current fourth graders. Those are the third graders that you saw in that circle. It is our largest group at the Collicott School. We have five fourth grades, and it's our largest group of high-need students. So our population of high-need students is mostly in that grade, current grade four class last year. Again, Julie spoke about her experience. This is the first year third-grade teachers will be working with Martha Winnaker in really digging deep into the Reader's Workshop materials and models. So all the great supports that our grade one and two teachers have had in the past few years is growing into grade three this year. I think that it is a group of students that will make exceptional gains this year, based on the support that the teachers will receive, as well as the children.
So you don't see this as a systemic thing?
It didn't happen district-wide.
Okay.
Let's go.
Thank you very much for this wonderful presentation, and thanks, all of you. I know it's a lot of time to be on a site council, and I think the effort is rewarding for you as an individual, but it also takes away from, I'm sure, other time that you have to do with your family, et cetera. I just have one question. On the initiatives, you said you increased time on task in all classrooms. So is that a teacher organizational technique, or what is that? Because to me, just as a parent, I would think, "Oh, well, you've somehow extended the day," which is great, but I'm just wondering what that means.
There are a few things that are happening systemically. Number one, the announcements happen as soon as they possibly can in the morning. School starts at 8:20. Students are in front of their lockers with books until 8:20. At 8:20, they go into their classrooms. I do the announcements right away, and instruction begins as soon as they're done. During the announcements, we have a shared theme every single week, and this is the time for us to use common language about expected behaviors that Margot talked about. So during that time where we share the theme of the week and the expected behaviors, we set a tone for the school week, and we set a tone for all students using common language about behavior, discipline, and also their work ethic. So we're setting a tone that there is a high expectation for student behavior, quick and quiet transitions, being prepared. So we are creating an environment where students know that they're expected to do well, and they are expected to do work. We've also made the most of our snack breaks by way of snack tasks. Although, you know, students still have that time for a mental break and a snack in the morning before lunch, it's usually guided by some sort of task. So it is, the time is limited, and it is well-planned.
Part of the support that we've also been giving teachers in the Reader's Workshop model has been helping them to maximize the time that they have with their children so that there's less downtime in between activities within the Reader's Workshop block. So we've really seen an increase in terms of how quickly children are getting down to work when they are starting in class, and how long they can sustain that work throughout the class because they're building stamina through the Reader's Workshop model. And I know with Julie's class, at the beginning of the year, the length of time they could read has increased steadily to this time of the year. So I think through our choice of curriculum materials, we can also support increasing that time on task as well.
That's great. And then, one other question I had was around the preschool and whether the parent, are the parents from the preschool involved with, like, the PTO or the site council? And I know, I mean, you have a huge number of families that you're overseeing, and just wondering if those connections happen, or whether it's an opportunity maybe in the future.
Would the preschool parent, please raise your hand.
There you go.
We, it is definitely a goal of mine. Coming from the experience of being a curriculum coordinator where my job was focused in K-5, I'll be very honest that the preschool is my biggest learning curve, and I'm learning the protocols and the processes every day under the guidance of Janet Chan and Karen Glasby. I do think, you know, there's a sense of guilt that I took on as a principal about not knowing enough about the preschool when I was a curriculum coordinator, and I have been very mindful of including the preschool as much as possible in many events. We had great participation at our open house. In most of the culturels, we've included the preschool children. Some are not developmentally appropriate, but we've tried to be as inclusive as possible with three and four-year-olds. And it's definitely been a goal of mine to get to know the preschool parents. It is a different pick-up-and-drop-off procedure, but I try to be out there as much as possible and see some of the preschool parents in the morning.
That's great.
So it's a goal.
That's terrific. Thank you.
So thanks for a very good story. I think for the most part, our advice is keep doing what you're doing. I have just a couple of questions on goal number one, which is science. It seems to me that that is probably the area where you have the biggest opportunity for improvement. But it, the goal reads, "Increase proficiency for all grade five students by implementing new science curriculum units." Is it the simple implementation of the new units that will increase proficiency? Or is it that they impart new skills that are relevant to performance? That's one question, and I'll stop there.
I think the materials are only as good as the users, and we are lucky that we have a staff that is interested and willing to learn. The professional development that has been offered is so important. If we didn't have that, and if we didn't give the teachers the time to learn, then it would be a wasted investment. So I think everybody is connected to this goal. We see, the world is a science and math place. Everybody sees the value. Our PTO meeting this Monday, when we talked about the science fair, was our best-attended PTO meeting. Parents came out of the woodwork. There's a need. The materials are wonderful. They're only as good as the users and the support that we give them. I have to credit Bernadette Monin. She's been an exceptional resource, and identifying what materials to buy was no easy task. Begging for the money to buy them was no easy task, and now, supporting the implementation is no easy task, but she is getting it done. And we, as administrators and curriculum coordinators, need to support the teachers. So no, just buying the curriculum is not enough.
So what's, but with regard to the materials, what's different? What's better about them? What were you using, and what's better about what you're using now?
Well, we now have an aligned curriculum to the current state standards. Before, we had materials that were shared district-wide, and people would teach science when they could get their hands on the materials. And then, it wasn't so easy to teach science. It was a chore. It was an effort. We now have materials accessible to teachers that are aligned. We are following the most current state standards, and we are identifying time in our day to make sure that science is being taught and being integrated into Reader's Workshop and Writer's Workshop. Sure. I just also wanted to identify the notebooks, the science notebooking that came up. When we talk about keeping a notebook in science, it's not just taking notes. It's an opportunity for children to observe, make predictions and inferences, and in almost every grade, they're doing that. And it's my hope that with the science notebooks, they're learning more about science and learning how to become critical thinkers, but it will also improve our writing scores. It's important to note that when we got our science EMCAT scores in early June, they came with just the multiple choice and the short answers. And Janet and I were, and Bernadette, we were pretty excited about the scores we saw. And when we factored in the open response pieces, that's when we lost a lot of our credit. So in addition to the science, we know that there's a need to support writing in science. So taking time to use those notebooks and to write about the material that we're learning about is so important. When I observed in the fifth grade last week, I was amazed by the way the children were talking to each other and the vocabulary that they were using. They weren't spitting out words that they had studied or looked up and defined in the glossary. They were words that they were experiencing, and the practice of that in the classroom was amazing to watch.
Just to add to that, the prior science curriculum was really based on students reading about science and looking at pictures and graphs, and that was all great, but the kids weren't doing science very often. If they had a teacher who was particularly interested in science and could come up with some experiments that really supported what they were learning about, they did some of that. The real great advantage to the FOS curriculum units is that the children are doing science. They're doing the work that scientists are doing, and then they're writing lab reports just as scientists write, so that they're engaged in the materials in a way that they never were before. And we're really seeing an increased enthusiasm and excitement from the children around this, and even on my end, from the literacy piece, I'm seeing kids really looking at pieces of text about science very differently now because there's a deeper understanding of the content behind it, because they're spending more time doing science as opposed to reading about it.
If I might, now, the advancement budget that Holly's outlined, and we talk about every week at this table, enabled us to purchase the FOS kits for grades three, four, and five. Where historically, in the Milton Public Schools, we would hire, we would be able to purchase a grade level a year. And as I listen to you, I analogize it to the school building project that was such a success. To me, from my point of view, listening about science in Milton Public Schools, three, four, and five teachers are all in it. So you're not the fifth-grade teacher saying, "I have to wait two years till the budget allows that." They can hire, they can purchase the science materials. This is a three, four, five synergy around science. The consultant came in from the Midwest, and the feedback that I get from professional development, they attribute the success of this first year to this consultant. Teachers are still corresponding with the consultant online. She spent three days. It was an opportunity to bring all the third-grade teachers district-wide, and then the fourth-grade teachers and the fifth-grade teachers. So the implementation has been contagious, and it's a district-wide initiative. And that wouldn't have happened without the advancement funding.
And when you talk about being contagious, although the materials went to grades three, four, and five, the pictures you see on our slide are from grades one and three. So the science notebooks, although we didn't need new materials for those, you'll see students, you know, I think about your children outside my window observing the tree with their notebooks, and that's something that's happening in every first grade, and they're talking about things in a different way. So it is contagious. Although the materials went specifically to grades three, four, and five, it's throughout the school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much, colleagues. I'd like to invite to the table Bill Ritchie, a director of Consolidated Facilities, and along with Bill, Bob Mayhew.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, Bill.
Thank you for having us. Well, I'd like to present tonight is the, an updated PowerPoint. It's pretty much the same PowerPoint, keep adding to it. Maybe things change and staff change, so I'm trying to run through it as quickly as I can, and I won't resolve the details. Mostly, I haven't seen it before. Anything to ask or question?
Operations manager.
Well, this first slide represents the responsibilities of, obviously, our department's charged with the oversight in the operation of all school and town buildings, preventive maintenance programs, oversight of custodial, maintenance, and contracting, cleaning, capital planning, life cycle analysis, integrated pest management programs, qualified generated sprinkler inspections, environmental health and safety inspections. I'm just trying to pick out all the bullets. I won't go through every one of them, just in understanding what we do. This next half slide represents the current staff and oversight. We roughly have about 22 buildings that we oversee within the town and schools, close to about 920,000 square feet of space. We currently have 34 staff in overall, 10 staff from the Consolidated Facilities Department, which mainly do maintenance, 24 staff for school custodians. We have some contract vendors. We have about 16 right now. We have two cleaning contracts on the town side. One note I will bring up here, I actually did a presentation to the school, to the borough selectmen not too long ago, and somebody says, "When I started this job 3.5 years ago with myself moving over," and obviously, we had a few maintenance people, and so we've increased the staff. So it's nice to let the public know that today, we have 10, but six of them have already been funded. So we only really funded four new positions. So it's nice to know that, because some people say, "10 staff, that's a lot of money to the budget, you know, to the pension plan, to health insurance." But so we only really, only four really have been added over the last three and a half years. This next, yeah, we could jump on here. Next, keep jumping on, okay. This next slide represents the cleaning standards for custodians. I think it's always nice to point out where we are within the industry. There's like five levels of cleaning. Most public facilities try to maintain Level Three, which is that blue slide up there. We try to maintain about 28 to 33,000 square feet. The last paragraph down there, all the assumptions, this is based on, the 28,000 square feet is based on the actual productive cleaning. If you know what a custodian does during the daytime, it's, some of it's productive, but they do a lot of other things. They do a lot of security, locked doors, open doors. They do, you have to do setup, breakdowns, you know, escorting- They have to do setup, breakdowns, you know, escorting parents back into the building. So, the production really kind of goes up. So, my calculation says that we're probably doing about 36,000 square feet per custodian, which is still pretty good. But we like to maintain between 28 and 33. When you start getting beyond to Level 4, then things really start deteriorating. So, we have a lot of square footage, about 680,000 square feet of space that we try to clean. So, that's a lot of space. I believe that the staff is doing an enormous job, you know, trying to maintain what we have to maintain based on the staffing levels. This next slide is the work order program that we put in called School Dude. We put this in probably about 2 and 1/2 years ago. We started out with obviously no work orders. Today, we're heating roughly about 5,000 work orders. We have completed about 4,000 and 200. We have 125 in progress. And we closed out 754 in PMs. So, it's a great tool. We can kind of go back, look at the analysis, kind of break down where's all the work. Based on the square footage of 920,000 square feet, we're still running about 60% of our workload is in the schools, 30% of the town, and we have 10 just kind of discretionary of all the emergencies that we... But so, you know, but that kind of makes sense based on all the square footage. It's a great tool. It's out of the 300 schools in Mass., you know, that I know of, probably 90% of the people are using School Dude program. This next slide represents ongoing preventive maintenance measures. You know, so obviously, the department, we do roofing, we do heating ventilation repairs, programming, major plumbing repairs, tile carpet renovation repair, life safety upgrades, major electrical upgrades, major heating ventilation upgrades. All right, it's good. Some of the current goals of the Consolidated Facilities Department, we want to continue to evaluate and consolidate vendor contracts for efficiency, cost savings. When I started this position, you know, we had roughly about 38 vendors. We're down to 16. We'll probably stay somewhere around there, because we really need the 16 that we have. We continue to reduce energy by performing energy audits, obtaining energy grants from utilities, and ongoing running of our energy management systems for peak performance. We continue to train in-house staff in order to maintain these specialized electrical, plumbing, heating, ventilation system, as well as our roofing, security hardware, and life safety equipment. Some of the energy conservation measures that we've put into place, we're still working with third-party energy consultants to investigate additional energy options for schools and town buildings. We're still a green community. We just did the updated portfolio for the green community, so hopefully, there won't be too many questions and we can get certified again. The certification, if we get certified again, we can apply for another round of grants. Every year, the green community has about $250,000 worth of grant money. It's called the competitive rounds. So, you have to compete against someone else. Whoever has the best options for energy savings, you can kind of get there. So, I'm hoping this year... Last year, we kind of missed it, because we had to write a new vehicle policy, and it was really... The competition was really steep. This year doesn't look as steep, but so I'm hoping maybe to gain some energy grants. And most of the grant money, if it was awarded, would probably be poured towards outside lighting, to, you know, to LED lights. Because that seems like be a big bang for the buck, you mean, outside. We have 250 metal halide lighting, so I'd go to LED, which would reduce that in half. And it's actually, it's a much brighter light. So, that's where we try to put some of these things. The ongoing 5-megawatt off-site meeting project that Glenn and I have been working on for a couple of years now, we're still in the permitting process. It just takes a long time to get the permits. But still, you know, I make the phone call every month, you know, what's going on. It's just a long and slow process. Hopefully, you know, I'm hoping it's gonna, maybe by this April, have some good news. And this year, we negotiated our natural gas and electricity contracts to school and town buildings. Next slide, projects completed in 2015. We did the high school... At the high school, we replaced the roadway in Upper Drainage up to Lower Gower Road to Blue's Parkway. The high school replaced the Brooksfield outdoor lighting. We did district-wide line striping in all the schools. P.S. Middle School replaced a retaining wall that was failing. P.S. Middle School, we repaved the rear entrance. And we also got an energy grant for about $21,000 to replace more high-efficiency lighting, and that was all completed. This is some of the things that we... I'm not... There's many more, but this is a snapshot of what we do. These are some pictures. This was the Gower Road site when we were under construction. That's the finished product there. And, you know, we did... You know, we striped it and we put drainage on the left side of the road, which actually made a big difference so far. There's some paving and back at P.S. Middle School, where all the buses park, it really got beat up pretty bad. This was a retaining wall that was done in the construction project that I'd have to say was not really the greatest job. But so, we... Well, I had the contractor there. We had priced the job at about $12,000 at the end of the project. I had the contractor doing that roadway. We actually did this project for about $2,500. And this is the finished... It's not the greatest picture, but that's the finished product. So, instead of putting retaining wall back, that would probably fail again, we just graded it out and put grass. Much simpler, much simpler, and less maintenance. These are some of the... This is a hot water system that the science wing at the high school. This is some of the things that we do that are pretty major. This is the lighting. We just finished a lighting project at the Brooksfield. We have the light cabin, but we placed in probably 12 years. It's a 1,500 watt metal halide. I'd love to go to LED, but LED technology's not there. And people say, "Well, why don't you go to LED?" I said, "Well, if the Patriots don't have LED, we don't need LED." So, when the Patriots put LED in, that's when the technology's pretty good. So, they haven't done it yet. It's not perfected that well yet. Major projects proposed for 2016. Now, obviously, these projects, it's obviously depending on improvement from capital committee and budget. Continue to install and upgrade security equipment. P.S. Middle School, heating ventilation, energy management system upgrades. The high school, we repaired the Brooksfield track. High school gym floor transition panels. And the high school fairhouse parking expansion plan. So, this next plan, actually, that's the high school site looking down from Google and way in the back of the Copan Fairhouse. Let me make the next slide. That the way in the back there, you see the new parking that I want to add. I like to add 25 spots, which will really help out with the parking and maybe look at changing all the parking plans. So, not having... Right now, a bus will park and traffic will come, you know, come in and out. The road's not designed for that. We're thinking about maybe making it to a one-way, so you come in, you park your car, and you go out. I think that's going to be enormous, save a lot of time and maybe avoid any type of accidents or any type of safety issues. So, we looked at this plan. This plan could run anywhere from $45,000 to $60,000, depending how elaborate. There's some probably some... $60,000 would probably be the highest, where we have to do some granite curbing and some more drainage. But I think it's... That's how the site probably... Who knew how it was designed 10 years ago? No one really knew how busy Copan Fairhouse would be and the amount of people using it. But I think we really need the additional parking. So, that's, you know, that's something down the line that we can, you know, try to do fundraising for or put in the capital, on the capital plan. And then, these last few slides, this future needs for Consolidated Facilities. Obviously, we're... Department, we're still looking for a facility in operation building. It's a brand-new department, and I know it's going to take time to really find a permanent home. I'm working with the DPW. They're proposing doing something down there, so we may eventually go down there. But it may be a 5-year plan before that happens. But, you know, it would be nice to have that. And staffing needs for the future, you know, based on funding. Would love to get a licensed craftsman on board to do some of our major carpentry and pro-permits for us. And maybe a maintenance system somewhere down the line to help to work with a licensed electrician and a heating ventilation technician. These are just some ideas as we just try to grow the department. And lastly, I'd like to maybe a special acknowledgement to... We recently mostly, and we did some, the granite signage... I call it the granite signage team, you know, who, you know, worked around these schools and put all these beautiful entrance stones in. You know, special thanks to Milton Public Schools parents, David Tarter, who really got this thing going, and Tony Musso, owner of Musso Construction, his crew, Kerry Driscoll, who are very involved in the planning, installation of granite stones. We also like to grateful to Tony Will and Will Custom Soils, who helped, and Mike Sharone did all the stone engraving. So, it's really... And I tell you, he's a facilities guy. He's amazing, working with David and trying to get this project off. And I think it really makes, you know, the site, you know, really looks nice. And I always like to... We have a bunch of landscapers who work throughout the town, you know, in schools, called the landscaping, who are always helping out down at Tucker. Eagle Farms, who, you know, gives us some discount pricing on things that we purchase. Johnny Driscoll, who does a lot of work around town. The Amateur Garden Club, and Malloy Landscaping. And I also like to thank all the department heads and town and school employees, boards and committees for the support and assistance in this brand of department. I mean, so I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't be where I am today in this department without everybody's support. I hope you enjoyed my improved presentation. And welcome any questions, if you have them.
And before the questions...
Apparently, they liked it a lot, apparently.
Before the questions, I'd like to recognize Bob Mayhew is with his title, Operational Manager. Operations Manager.
Yeah, and what, you know, proposal of Bob's was a lot of the day-to-day, working with the custodians and the maintenance staff, and juggling and moving people around, and really important, a very important position. And we're as close to him here on the town, so he's doing an excellent job.
The day-to-day stuff is non-stop. It's challenging, but I think we're ahead of the curve. We're not losing. The guy's skill level is getting better and better. And I'm proud of all our guys. They're starting to do, you know, flooring, roofing, like Bill said, cross educating them and training with Jimmy, with our HVAC guy, doing 3 or 4 calls a day. And all the buildings in the town are Herculean, and keeping up with it is challenging.
Ms. Sherry.
Hello. Thank you. One of the updates that you gave were that you negotiated the natural gas and electricity contracts for this year. How did that go this year? I know that's a challenging...
Yeah, well, two things happened. Well, the gas, we did pretty good. Gas, we pretty much, you know, just up a tad. So, we did good there. Electricity has, you know, everyone's heard about that. Electricity just started skyrocketing. So, it went up just based on, you know, and one of the bigger things, one of the biggest costs was... We locked into a 5-year contract many years ago. It was really, really low. And that contract came to an end. And obviously, now, we had to go up back a little bit. So, the price did go up probably 30% of the land, probably on an average, you mean, depending on how cold it is and how, you know, how people practice good energy conservation. But that's, you know, it's every...
So, I just want to say that that's a huge jump, but... And I see faces around the table. But historically, you've done an amazing job at really getting tremendously low rates. So, from where we were to where we are now is so much greater because of the good rates that you got. I know that, you know, many people would reach out to you, Bill, and try and find out how, you know, what's Bill doing and who's Bill getting to do the, you know, who's making... Bill making his contract with us.
Well, the team, you know, obviously, we go up the bid, and we obviously have a team, and Glenn works very closely with me, and Sam Simon, Emily Fagan, no doubt, right? We did a long bid process because we were watching the market. It's a crystal ball, you know? It's just, who knows what the rate's going to be? It's like, look at... I would never think. I went through Whitman tonight, and gasoline is a dollar 97. I just... Who would know that? And I was... Electricity go down there. But it's just, it's a crystal ball. Who would know? But, you know, so we, you know, we did not lock in for a 5-year contract because it was high. So, we locked into a 2-year contract. And hopefully, the rates come down, we'll jump into a better contract.
And just one other thing, comment just about one of the things that you shared with us, that you said you've added 4 staff members. I would like to say that, from my lens, I think that that's an investment in our community because we have these tremendous buildings that we are responsible for maintaining. We can never go back to where we were and let our buildings get into those situations. So, adding 4 staff members and now saying that's townwide, I think that I would encourage you to say that that's an investment in our infrastructure and maintaining what we've got. So, thank you for your good work.
Mr. Zouzis.
Bill, just a quick question. You had a screenshot of... Looked like a workflow software.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that a new product that you've licensed?
Yeah, that's one of the things that we purchased when I first... You know, I mean, I knew after I get the department money, we need a better work order program. It's called School Dude. And, you know, we... And it's mainly designed for schools, but we kind of craft it so we can kind of piggyback with town council, too. But every time, you know, and it's still, it's ongoing. We're still trying to get everyone to kind of use the School Dude work order. So, you submit a work order. You pretty much tell me that you might be copying, and we put it down carpentry. And we assign it to a certain person with a certain skill set. So, we can track how long it took you to get the work order done, how much we spent on the work order, and when it was completed.
And has that increased the efficiency of the department in your job?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
It's incredible, too.
Yeah. Because before, it was either an email, or you'd be, you know, the heating guy would be running down the hallway, "Hey, why are you here? Can you fix my heat?" It just wasn't really efficient. Because, you know, now, we can kind of plan our workload. And we have to, you know, obviously, on very cold days, you know, we have to, you know, we have to address issues that we have to... The workload system kind of goes to the side. We have, you know, respond to emergencies. It's a nice tool.
Ms. Kelly.
Thank you very much for this presentation and all the work that you do to keep our buildings in the town, actually, up and operating. When we last talked about the long-range, or the facilities subcommittee, I think we had asked about a long-range maintenance plan for the school buildings. Is that something that's available and could be sent to us, or is that sort of a work in progress? I just, we were wondering sort of where that all is.
Yeah, well, so, you know, a few years back, we did a condition study of all the buildings. And it's really not a long... It's just really, it was a snapshot of where the building conditions are right now. So, we have a capital committee in my job, and obviously, you know, I represent both the schools and the town, and try to put a capital, you know, all the requests on the next 5 years. It doesn't address issues 20 years out. That's, you know, you know, that's a... Well, that's what I call a deep dive. We have a lot of studies that are being... You know, it's, you know, surface diving, so the condition study. What I'd love to see, but it's very expensive to do that, a deep-dive study would be $100,000 plus, when you're really going to every building and look at the structural analysis of a building, the wiring, the mechanical. When is the boiler really going to fail in the piping? And that, we... I do not have that analysis. You know, I'm doing some analysis right now on the rooftop units myself, because I had an engineer come in, and he kind of showed me how they do it, you know, and I took his plan, and I'm doing it myself. So, you know, so we can say that in 20 years, the rooftop units may start failing, or they might not be efficient. Boilers may... Some boilers, but some... A good boiler can last you 20 to 50 years, depending how well you take care of it. It's like anything, you know what I mean? But in 50 years, is it efficient? Probably not. But, yeah, I'd love to have that type of study. I know the DPW is trying to do an enormous study right now, and the fire station is trying to do an even study. And, you know, the schools are really... You know, the condition study that we did with DRA, we actually built our schools. We're fairly in good shape. The buildings are all, you know, right now, glove is probably, what, 2,002, so 11 years old at this point, 12 years old. So, we're still doing pretty good, you know what I mean? But somewhere down the line, we're really going to need that type of cap... Those types of ideas and analysis to how you budget for the next 20 years to replace those boilers when they do fail. But that's going to be very costly. If I kind of... Someone answer that, you mean? But, yeah, you know, that's a work in progress. But it's going to... It's a little bit, you know, I'm a building engineer. When you do a study like that, you hire mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, structural engineers, handicap engineers. It's a different type of team, but, you know, so that's... And it gets to be very costly.
And then, you had mentioned for FY '16, I think?
Yeah.
The parking addition. Is that something that's in your capital request? I don't remember seeing it. Okay.
Yeah, we, you know, it's something we kind of talked about, but we really presented the capital was too, you know, much earlier in the, in the game. And that has to be, really, so, so what, so maybe, so not having, if the funding, you know, who knows? Sometimes somebody, you can find funding, but if we don't go to the capital, I think we still need to look at the parking plan. Regardless if we do the parking, we may want to redesign it, so to make it safe, because I think it just may, it may buy some time and some wear and tear, because what's happening, a lot of people are parking on the grass, which is ruining that. So maybe having that one way may solve, solve that issue. So still, it's still very worth, you know, it's a good thing to look at.
And then, just while we're still talking about parking lots, the lights. So as I drive around after these meetings, there are many lights that are out in the parking lot. Is that, do we have a system for identifying when lights are out?
Yeah.
And, you know, how is that communicated, and how quickly can it be turned around so the lights actually get installed?
Yeah, it's like, yeah, we, I will say, lighting is-
It's constant.
It's a constant challenge, so we, you know, so most of the lighting gets done in the evening, because we need a bucket truck to do them, and it's two seventy-seven, so it's pretty, it's, you know-
Specific.
Yeah, if you make a mistake, it's not good. I usually use the DPW after hours, they have a bucket truck. Kevin Locken, who's been very good to us, and we probably, within two or three days, we could pretty much respond, like tonight, knowing I was coming here. Half the lights were out, are one coming out. So I obviously knew, being a facilities guy here, there's a problem here. It's not, all these lights didn't blow out. Somebody was working on the panel today and forgot to turn them back on. So I went there and I turned them back on. So hopefully, if you came early enough, maybe I'll go back out there, I'll be back on again.
So those I noticed, as I came in, not being a facility person, I had no idea, it was just a switch that was off. But there definitely is one light out here that's been out for several weeks now. So I guess that's what I'm asking, is there a system, whether it's, you know, the closing custodian walks, you know, walks around, I don't know, or drives around and says, "Up", you know, and sends an email or whatever, that says, "At some point, we need to get these fixed".
Right, yeah.
Those are the kinds of things I worry about, just, you know-
We have custodians that will be poured back to me, or sometime, you know, Bob's working late, I'm working late, we kind of do a survey, and then when I call Kevin, I say, "Kevin, I have three lights out at the high school, three at Glove", and you try to be efficient.
Right.
Because I don't want to call high on Kevin every other night.
Every day, right.
For one light, two lights, three lights. And a lot of times, it's not the light bulb, it's a, it's a transformer, it's a relay, so it's, it may not be the bulb, so sometimes you have to order like, you know, a balus or a relay, so, yeah, but we, we're constantly doing. We, we probably, it's, that's one of the reasons why the LED lighting, for me, is going to be enormous, because it's a brand-new fixture, and those bulbs are supposed to last for five years. So we're doing, yeah, it's, you know, these lights are kind of getting old, the, you know, it's, you know, the fixtures are getting old, so LED lights will make a big difference.
And on that note, I just want to commend you for your continual looking for grants, especially around more energy-efficient, whatever, light bulbs or whatever, across the schools when you are here, and then probably across the town. We definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of grants out there, but yeah, but they're very competitive. It takes a lot of time to get them, but, you know, we've, you know, we've done extremely well. I'd say this, you know, we've, the school's done, you know, really well over the last seven, eight years in trying to get these grants, and I actually like that. That's my, that's my passion. I love doing grant, you know, for all the energy, but it's tough, tough to get them.
And just on that note, I remember years back, there was sort of a walk-through the entire school system to see whether refrigerators were, you know, in classrooms, et cetera, which I think you were suggesting that if we took them out, would be a benefit to energy. So if we really do, and I guess I would like to ask Glenn at some point to report out when this increase in electricity cost is coming, you know, maybe it's time to redo that, just to make sure that we're, every classroom is really as efficient as it possibly can be, especially if we're going to be hit with a huge increase in electricity costs.
Yeah, we always say that a lot, you know, either the biggest, I remember sitting here, I don't know, seven, eight years ago, we talk about, it was an energy group that was coming in, it was all based on behavior, that the biggest savings is behavior. When you leave a classroom, turn the light off. Don't wait for the sensor to turn it off twenty minutes later. If everyone did that every day, you could really, even your, even your home, turn on the thermostat a couple of degrees. It makes enormous difference. So that's a good, you know, good to practice, good to practice in your own life, I mean, so, yeah. So I always, I always tell people that. And, yeah, when we did that energy audit, what we did is that, we purchased some refrigerators, but they're more efficient. We took all the old ones out, and we really kind of narrowed down. But it's still, you've got to coffee go through, because new teachers come in, and, you know, everybody likes to bring their coffee pot and microwave. It's just the way it is, so, yeah.
Thanks, Bill.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
May I say something before Bill leaves? This, we've come to a new level that whenever Bill would come, we'd talk about consolidated facilities. And so now, it's a nice night, that consolidated facilities is just part of the town of Milton. And so for those skeptics of consolidated facilities, there's not one downside for the Milton Public Schools for consolidated facilities. We have one on every single front. And working with Bill, of course, we're all hesitant, "Oh, Bob's nice, but we know Bill, and Bill's in charge." And I want to say that Bob Mayhew gives us a hundred and fifty percent, just like Bill Ritchie does, and I think you could stop any teacher, any principal, any coordinator, any custodian, and it's only been pluses for the skeptics and for the naysayers out of consolidated facilities. I cannot imagine being alone, not being part of the town when it comes to these facilities, and not having the benefit of the entire town. So for everyone who's supported consolidated facilities, and to Bob and Bill who champion the town, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thanks. And I'd like to thank all the principals that helped, and they've been so complimentary and appreciative with our new painter. He's getting a lot done after hours, and it's really starting to pay dividends and show, so.
Well, everybody worried that the two of you, we wouldn't see you, or you wouldn't be as accessible, and it's just like the two of you, Milton Public School employees and town employees.
Bob was nicer than me, because he bothered me to do it, but I have to pay the bills, so I'm a little tougher. And I say, hey, wait, we're not budgeted.
Bill, I have something to tell you, a little secret on TV. He's just as tough as you are. You trained him well, educated him well.
Thank you, all right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you again, yep.
Thank you. We, going on to the next item, last week, you had the high school team here. I would ask, if the chair would ask for a vote to approve the Milton High School Program of Studies?
So we had a briefing on this last, last meeting. There were a few questions. Principal Jet sent a memo that addressed those questions, so, Ms. Kelly?
I just have one question. It may just be my lack of attention to detail, and I apologize in advance. I thought we were talking about advancing STEM classes, and maybe it's the STEM approach to all science classes. But I guess I was surprised to not see any, any mention of that in the Program of Studies. So I guess, again, I might have been misinformed and been hallucinating or something, but I thought that was part of sort of our multi-tiered, we're advancing STEM at all levels, and yet I don't really see STEM even as a word being mentioned, never mind a separate class, and maybe there is no such thing as a separate high school science STEM class.
Well, I don't know if we want to vote this tonight pending me following-
No, yeah, I'm just asking.
But they've put a tremendous amount of work, and they're doing a tremendous amount of work at the high school, so your point is correct. So I'll follow up with the science director and the principal tomorrow. So if you approve that pending, I would send out and go over those science options.
I'll have a motion for approval?
Some of, second.
Moved by Ms. Sheridan, seconded by Mr. Zouzis. All in favor of the motion? She unanimous?
And I appreciate Ms. Kelly for years, that's an educational piece, asking and reminding us that that's supposed to be approved. In your packet, Karen Glasby, I want to wish her well, and thank her for her service to Milton Public Schools, has announced her retirement as Director of Pupil Personnel. In your packets, I have inserted a timeline for a search committee. We'll be, I'll be contacting the PTL presidents and asking for representatives. I'm asking for a representative from this board, if you'll take a look at the schedule. We go between nights and days. The search is going to be a search that happens during the day, and I know you're all employed and have busy lives, but if you would consider, we have actually identified days that the interviewing and the screening will take place. For the viewing public, you should know that I go to the Milton Educators Association, and they come forward with two or three teachers and one administrator. Central office identifies principals. We have parent representatives for this high, parent representatives, I should say, at, I'm talking about the high school. There'll be representatives system-wide, from regular education and special education on this committee. A school committee member, unlike other school districts where the superintendent screens the applications, and will give ten applications to the screening committee. If we have fifty or a hundred and fifty applications, they're all given to the screening committee. We establish the characteristics we're looking for in the new Director of Pupil Personnel. We screen individually, we come together, we have a process of identifying candidates that we want to interview. We create the questions together. Prior Superintendent Dr. Shifun created an outstanding and very streamlined process for the interviewing. And again, as I say to screening committees, at the end of this process, that's been perfected over the years, everyone on the screening committee owns the appointment and supports the appointment and knows that they've been involved. So that's in your packet.
I'd just make a comment to that. So at this time, when you're looking at this job and going out for search, I'd just like to make a comment about the title. I think that the title of Pupil Personnel Services doesn't necessarily inform the public what this job is, and I'd just like to suggest, perhaps, we look at what other districts call this, this job description, what the title is that's given, and maybe revisit that at that time. Just a suggestion.
And so for the viewing public, Ms. Sheridan's talking to, this is the Director of our Special Education Programs. That person also oversees the homeless, the children whose families who have identified as homeless, they are different. We did this about four years ago, and we did the title, but the point's well taken, and we'll take a look at it. So that's in your packet. Very briefly, tomorrow night, I want to review, I want to remind the viewing public that tomorrow morning, Milton High School students, Chris Heron, will speak to Milton High School students for the second time. He's coming here to Milton. And tomorrow night, I want to urge parents to consider coming to the Milton High School Auditorium at six-thirty for the Chris Heron presentation. Rabbi Benjamin spoke to you, but for anyone who just viewed, turned on the school committee, reminding you Monday night, January nineteenth, Milton Community Annual Memorial Celebration in the name of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King at the Concord Baptist Church on Blue Hill Avenue. The entire public is invited. We're not going to have another meeting before next Tuesday, Tuesday night, is Tuesday the twentieth?
Yes.
Tuesday night. Tuesday night, I call graduation, and next Tuesday night, the two biggest nights in the Milton Public Schools. What's next Tuesday night? This is a quiz.
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten information night. Kindergarten information night, you will see full Charles C. Winchester Auditorium. Parents who also have children in the Milton Public Schools come back. It, you'll, you'll never see so many smiling faces walking into that night. The kindergarten team, the principals, led by Janet Sheehan, are doing a tremendous amount of work. We present everything from our community schools program to transportation speaks, and it's a very exciting night. And I always say that next Tuesday night is the beginning of a thirteen-year relationship with the parents and guardians of the children entering the Milton Public Schools next year. I want to make the night of the Milton School Committee by telling you that we're close to the number of register, families registering that we have currently in kindergarten. So you can translate that into, again, we're going over our data for the last two years. Some parents come and decide their child's not going to enter kindergarten at this time. Life happens and people move, but indications are that enrollment's going to be very, very high. I want you to circle your calendars, next Thursday and Friday night at seven o'clock, and next Saturday at two o'clock, Milton PS Players are presenting Oklahoma. That's a treat, and tonight, it does sell out on some nights. On the front of our website tomorrow, you'll be able to find, after I speak with Chairman Walker, the updated dates of the school committee and the administration going out, explaining the FY sixteen budget and the cuts and reductions to the PTOs at all of our six schools. Also, I want to take one moment and remind you to circle your calendars. February eleventh, Milton High School staff and teachers are coming up with an unbelievable evening that they are planning, fifty years later, why the struggle for civil rights is still relevant. And they've gotten speakers from across Massachusetts, they are working with the staff and the students, and again, this will be a night that will be remembered for a long time in the Milton Public Schools, a night that everyone's looking forward to. But I want to close with a very interesting story. The Blue Hills Bank, that's just now opened, one of its, I guess you call it-
Branches.
Branches, here in Milton, last year was very good to the Milton Public Schools. We applied for grants, and all of our schools, except Pierce, was awarded a grant, and we'll detail those grants in my email blast. This current cycle, celebrated today, that Pierce was awarded a grant. So now, the Blue Hills Bank has awarded each of our schools a very generous, in the number of thousands of dollars, grants. It's a competitive process. Well, the Pierce came back today, and the Blue Hills Bank, if you go to it, they have a calendar down there. I sent somebody today, but they had closed, to get all of you one. And this calendar, sponsored by the Blue Hills Bank, celebrates hometown heroes from all the communities that the bank services. Well, the Pierce came up to me and said, "Mary, you know Ms. November?". And I said, "I do?", and they said, "Yes, Mary. You know Ms. November?". So for the viewing public, Ms. November is our own school committee member, Lynda Lee Sheridan, who is probably going to sit here tonight. I'm not sure that she was at the event today at the hotel, at the breakfast and luncheon. I'm waiting for the thousand-dollar check she was given for her favorite charity to donate, but since she's a Boston school teacher, and she got the grant for the Boston School, she might have another charity other than us to donate to, but I said, maybe she wants to make an announcement tonight. And this is right up in Hutchinson Field when she chaired the three-fifty, its anniversary. So I want to congratulate you, Ms. Sheridan, you're probably too shy to have shared, but people can go to the Blue Hills Bank and get their own calendar. And we were very proud. And the Pierce people were very proud of you, and we are very proud of you.
Thank you very much.
So that's the night. Thank you.
Wow, how do you follow that?
With Mike.
I don't know how Superintendent Gormly missed it, but there's an event that we are going to be helping out on on February eighth, the morning, Sunday morning, that maybe you want to just mention as well.
Oh, would you do that for me?
Yeah.
That's a miss on my part.
Yeah, which is fine, because we're so involved in it. That's why we just assume everybody knows about it. But Milton, once again, is sponsoring a robotics tournament on February eighth, Sunday morning, and it's in the Fieldhouse this year, is that right?
It is in the Copeland Fieldhouse.
And it is quite a sight to be seen. So if you have never been to one, you will be fascinated.
So Ms. Padera does the registrations, and twenty high schools from the greater Boston area competing. We're going to, we can't compete, we're hosting. Our team is going, Ms. Kelly could do this presentation, too. Our team's presenting next week. John Diamond told me where they're going. They're busy every morning working on their robot. You can report to your boys. But this is an unbelievable opportunity, and the whole community's coming together to host twenty high school teams coming. And so if you circle that date in your calendar, that Sunday, between twelve and four is the best time for the viewing audience. In the morning, they're working on their robots, but the competition is between twelve and four, and then the ceremony's at four o'clock. And John Diamond and a huge team, K-12 and the Milton Public Schools, in fact, Ms. Downs is going to issue the twenty-seven jobs that John Diamond needs help with to be able to host the hundreds of high school students in this competition. Thank you, Ms. Padera, for remembering that.
And just to add to that, they, because I think that, I'm not sure if I sent you that email, but it, the Milton Robotics Team, who entered the Zero Robotics Tournament this year, made it to the third round in that national competitions, which is pretty impressive in their first year. And I think they just had, you know, a student, a team of like five or six students, so they did very, very well.
Thanks to you for getting us involved in that. Thank you.
So I'm going to move to, I'm going to reorder this again, but I'm going to move to the report out on the budget planning meetings we've been having. Then we'll do town school consolidation, since Ms. Dexter and Ms. Fagan are here. Then we'll do town school consolidation since Ms. Dexter and Ms. Fagan are here. Then we'll do five-year projections, then we'll do budget cut reduction list. So here's a document that I'd like to hand out. Last Thursday, I'd like to commend Katie Conlin, who's our Chair of the Board of Selectmen. She asked that some representatives from the schools, the warrant committee, and the town get together to talk about the fiscal '16 budget. Her idea was that because, as you know, we have currently a $1 million reduction target based on the warrant committee's current look at a balanced budget, and the town has similar impacts, she thought that it would make some sense for us to have some conversations, not just about the fiscal '16 budget, but about the financial future of the town over the next four to five years. So we talked about free cash, we talked about potential overrides, we talked about the impact of reductions on towns and schools. And this is what we asked Ted and Amy, who's here, to put together. These are different scenarios which look at using more of the free cash and what the impact of that might be. But as we talked about it, obviously, using all of the free cash is not normally a fiscal action that you would take. But in this case, we said that if that was coupled with what we're calling a two-year plan, where we use some of the free cash, more of the free cash, to obviate the significant impacts of reductions in fiscal '16, but agree that we will support overrides in fiscal '16 and '17, one for firefighter pickings of about $300,000 in fiscal '16, and then a larger general operational override in '17, that that was a plan that we think certainly moves the town forward, it positions it for the next three or four years, and eliminates the need for, the need for the schools to take a $1 million cut. So after some discussion, we met last Thursday and then we met again this morning. And as a result of those two meetings, the warrant committee met last night, and the consensus that we reached this morning was that we would each go back and ask our respective bodies to support Scenario E. Scenario E allows for the schools to receive rather than a $1 million cut target, a $500,000 cut target, and it also, further down, allows for about $300,000 in capital cost. That's important because we, in the capital committee meeting on Monday night, we talked about the various capital requests, and the schools, as you know, has some technology requests that you all approved several months ago. But the discussion was which of the capital requests are candidates for bonding and which of the capital requests should be funded using free cash or some other means. And the thought was that most of the technology requests, because of the short useful lives, should be funded with free cash. This allows for some free cash to be available for that purpose. That failing, some of those capital projects may be in jeopardy. So what we're asking is that the school committee, and Katie will be asking the selectmen to do the same next Wednesday evening, but we're asking that the school committee support what we're calling a two-year plan that implements Scenario E, so reduces our cut target from $1 million to $500,000, allows for the use of some free cash for capital costs, that we would support an override for firefighter pickings of approximately $300,000 in fiscal '16 and a larger general operational override in fiscal '17. Questions?
So the override for next year would just be for that smaller amount?
Yes.
And then in the following year, we'd be seeking another override?
Yes.
Is there a reason why we're not doing both things at once? Just to spread it out?
We talked about that a lot. And the other benefit, we think, of this kind of two-year plan is that this allows us to use the, if you're thinking this year, the May Town Meeting and the October Town Meeting to do education. Firefighter Pickens, we think, has enough visibility so that we don't need to educate people much about that. But for the general operational override, I think that we thought that we should give that more time to build support.
And then, do we have enough, what's, how do we know what the next year's budget is going to look like where we wouldn't need an override? Are they projecting we would not need an override next year to not have drastic cuts to the school next year?
No, this, did you want to comment?
Well, I just wanted to comment when you mentioned firefighter pickings, that these need to be two separate overrides. That one is a different kind of an override. It sets a limit for the amount of expenditures that could be put owing to his conditions. So it, there can't be one question in any case, so that there has to be done as two separate items. So I would just want to mention that in case anyone was thinking they could be lumped together somehow. They do have to be two separate items because they're different kinds of things.
Okay.
So to your second question, this solves the, the use of more free cash solves, well, essentially solves the fiscal '16 budget problem. And the override would take care of the fiscal '17 budget shortfall. And hopefully, two to three years out past that.
Okay, so you were talking about the pickings override would be for, that would be on the ballot this year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the following year? Gotcha.
Ms. Kelly?
So how much, I might be missing, but the capital that you mentioned, is that on here?
It is. It shows as financial software, town software for 215, 799, and consolidated facilities miscellaneous for $60,000. So, but it doesn't necessarily have to be used for that purpose, but that's what he was allocating for capital.
So the capital is about 275K?
Right.
And you're saying that the schools need some of that?
Yes.
Am I understanding that correctly?
I'm saying that if, that's correct. If the decision is not to bond those things, and I actually have these here. So I mean, our number, right at the top, our number one priority was virtualize the servers. The discussion was that they, servers have a longer useful life, so we could bond those, so we're good on those. But our number two priorities were the iPad cards for SPED, the iPad cards for the high school, and the iPads for teachers. So we would need money to make sure that those, that our number two priorities are met there.
But there's no additional funding. I understand that, you know, the software is put in there and then whatever the other thing is there, but we're not even listed on here, I guess.
No, we're not. But I, so when Mike makes his proposal, I have a proposal on how we should structure that vote as well to make sure that there's some money available.
Okay.
Yep.
It should also be noted in here that the, he has included $300,000 for the pickings medical funds as part of this. So in fact, if that is an override and that does pass, that money would come out of this bucket and free up potentially that much more for spending, for other expenditure. But right now, in this scenario, it's funded out of free cash.
Yeah, yep.
Ms. Sheridan?
Just a little thing that jumps out at me, that maybe by the year 2020, we might not be using Chromebooks. So I mean, I think it's just a technology.
We're talking about 2016 on here.
No, I know, I know. I'm just, as I look at this document, I'm just thinking about whether it's just technology or not.
So if I could, I would like a motion supporting Scenario E and the plan that that includes for overrides in '16 and '17, and urging the selectmen to do the same. Ms. Kelly?
I certainly would approve of the plan. I don't know that I can vote to, because I won't be a school committee as of April. So I can't bind the school committee in that kind of a vote going forward, but the premise, I think, makes a lot of sense.
I think you can vote to support the plan now.
Yeah, well, yes, I guess.
Yeah.
I don't think it binds the newly elected school committee.
They could take it up again, I guess.
Right.
It's moved?
Thank you very much. Moved by Ms. Padera, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. On the motion, all in favor? Thank you, unanimous. Now the moment you've been waiting for. Mr. Zulis has a presentation.
Oh, thank goodness. You haven't talked in so long.
I know. I've been trying to be quiet this evening. This is on the, another recommendation from the Town School Consolidation Committee. We have a couple of the members here. I don't know if you want me to go over there with them?
Up to you.
I think so, if they want to, if Anne Marie and Amy want to come up and.
You're kidding. They're like imaginary friends up there?
Yes, Becky, I have imaginary friends. Yes, that's right. All right. Excuse me. Okay. Thanks. So just to remind you from last week, we are the Town School Consolidation Committee, which was charged by the Board of Selectmen and the school committee to look for efficiencies in business operations and information technology. Our members are, as I mentioned last week, and they include Anne Marie Fagan, our town administrator who's here, and Amy Dexter, our town accountant who's here, and Glenn Pavlicek, the Assistant Superintendent for Business, who is here. Also includes the other members listed up there, Phil Matthews, Jim McCauley, and Michael Blanchard. And I think you're familiar with our charge, as we mentioned last week. And so at this point, what we wanted to do was just set the context, and we tried to do this last night in the presentation, we'll try to do it again in this presentation, to set the context for what we're doing here. And the sights and sounds that you see may give you a sense for what we're dealing with here. Everyone, everyone who's here probably has some memory of the 1980s. You may remember some of the things up there, you may remember some of the music. You can keep the music loud, Glenn, I'll help juice me up a little bit. No, that's okay, that's okay.
Is that your band, Mike?
We can, we can.
Is that your band?
We can go to the next slide. Many things have changed since the 80s. You can click on the music because we have some more music. Many things have changed since the 80s, including the fashion and the style and the culture and the politics and the music. And hopefully, you can appreciate some of the cultural memories that we've put up here and the music that we have playing in the background. One thing that hasn't changed, and Glenn, you can go to the next slide, one thing that hasn't changed is from the 1980s, and that is our financial accounting software. So while many things may have aged with grace and some of the music you still may appreciate from the 1980s, I can assure you from our review of things over the last 10 or 11 months, the Milton financial accounting software that was implemented first in the 1980s, as best we can tell, has not aged well. And effectively, I think it's fair to say, is broken. And we have, in our review, identified, Glenn, you can go to the next slide, identified this as really the primary, great, as the primary inhibition to greater efficiency in the business operations and in the, of the town and the schools. I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I know you're trying to, but can we go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Because I think there was music there that we did not get.
I'm happy to have that pointed out. I was going to blow by it, but I'm happy to have that.
He's been asking for the music. That was good of you.
Glenn, he wants the music. And I can, I can actually, I can actually, let me just give you a quick anecdote on the music.
We can't hear all of the music.
What we chose for the music, what I chose for the music, was, first, you may have noticed Van Halen, I kind of thought Tom Hurley for a Van Halen man, and obviously, the second music was Madonna. I, you know, Katie Conlin strikes me as Madonna fan, and then obviously, we've got U2, that was intended to entice Dennis Cohane to support us. So that's where the, that's where the music comes from. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it. We can go to the next slide.
You'll have to travel with the Mary to every presentation.
So was that impolitic to say on TV? Probably. So anyway, back to the, back to the substance, you know, this isn't just flash, this is, we actually have substance here. And in the course of our meetings over the last 10, 11 months, and we've met approximately 28, 29 times, we've talked to 10 different town employees, well, not including the town employees you have here who are working with this software. We created for you and for the Board of Selectmen and for the Capitol Committee and for anyone who wants to read it, a 10-page memorandum laying out what we see as the deficiencies and what we see as the alternatives for improvement. So we've, we've done a lot to review this, and we see this, this, what we refer to as decades-old cobbled-together financial accounting software as one of the primary, primary problems in terms of efficiency in the town operations and school operations, school business operations and information technology operations. Just to highlight a few of the, a few of the deficiencies, oops, didn't do that right. Just to highlight a few of the deficiencies that, and give you an overview of what is in the memorandum. The primary problem here is that the status quo is not an option. Our support for our current software package, given its age, this is not surprising, is being phased out in the next three to five years. And if you assume that implementation will take, which we do, which implementation of a new system will take 12 to 18 months, if we wait and we don't seek approval for this until the town meeting in 2016, that will put us right up against the earlier deadline, the three-year deadline. This is because it's best to migrate financial reporting and receivables on July 1, which is the beginning of the fiscal year, and best to migrate payroll and accounts payable on January 1, the beginning of the calendar year. So if we wait until May of 2016 and we are starting with payroll and AP on January 1, 2017, then we're right up against a 12-month implementation. So we think, given the fact, and we found this out, when we were in the course of looking into this issue, we found this out in November, this heightened the urgency significantly. Another deficiency that we, that we've identified with respect to the software is because it's old, it just doesn't provide the functionality needed for a $100 million enterprise. And the result of it is, because we've, because of what's happened over the years and different packages have been cobbled together, there is not full integration, both within departments and among departments, including the town and the school department. It requires manual entries for, repeated manual entries of information, which leads to high risk of error and miscommunication. A couple of examples of that, the town accountant, Amy, when she receives commitments and abatements from the assessor's office, it requires her to enter those manually, and she has to do that on more than 100, more than 100 manual entries a year, which would be obviated if you had an integrated system. As you, as most of the members of this committee know, revolving accounts. As you, as most of the members of this committee know, revolving accounts under the current old software package are zeroed out, zeroed out at the end of every year. These are revolving accounts for the school and for the town, which requires a reentry of the balances in those accounts at the beginning of every fiscal year. So basically, the town and school personnel take the old numbers, print them out and figure out what those numbers are, and re-enter them for the beginning of the fiscal year. So these are just some of the ways in which this software is deficient. As you, as people in this room also know, the schools are unable to combine school grants and other funding with the general funding. And so, what this results in, both in the schools and there are other instances in the town, is that there's a heavy reliance on Excel spreadsheets, and in some departments, QuickBooks accounting software. So there's a lot of reliance on outside the system programs and spreadsheets in order to get an appreciation for the financial status, excuse me, of the schools and the town. The third of the five major deficiencies is the lack of efficient and timely report-creating functions. In order to get reports from this, the current system, which is a DOS-based system, which I don't even know what that is, it's not a Windows-based system, it requires the entering of arcane multi-entry formulas in order to get any kind of useful reports, or it requires the town personnel trying to get reports to consult with the vendor, and have them consult and try to develop the reports for them. So this is costly, this is inefficient, it doesn't work well, it results in quarterly reconciliations that take days instead of hours. The fourth primary issue that we saw, and this is telling again for the people in this room, and that is that this software is unable, as far as we understand, to handle complex payroll such as the schools, and this really applies to the schools, because of the inability of the software to handle complex payroll with many different, many different payment structures and employees getting different kinds of payment, the schools can't run one payroll. We have to run 14 different payrolls, which, again, creates high risk of error, creates inefficiency, creates a lot of busy work for personnel who could be doing other more important work. There is no connection to the mass teachers' retirement system, and so those reports have to be created outside the system, which creates more risk of error and creates more additional unnecessary busy work. There's no, what some refer to as encumbrance or projection of payroll. So you can't sit here today, and Glenn could explain this better than I can, but you can't sit here today and project where payroll will be in two months in the system. You have to do it outside the system, create an Excel spreadsheet to do it. There's no tracking of time and attendance and sick and vacation time, and this is something that's been pointed out in the management letter by the town's accountants as a deficiency. So that's the fourth major deficiency that we see. And then finally, and again, this is something that the people in this room are aware of, there's no budgeting, effective budgeting or forecasting with this software, which results in every town department and the town, every town department, the town itself, using other methods, most of them using Excel spreadsheets. So what we have is a $100 million enterprise being run by a bunch, being run on a bunch of different Excel spreadsheets, which we think creates a high risk of error and miscommunication. So, so we think that it's time now, because we are now in the second decade of the 21st century, and this software first came into being 21st century, we think the time now is, it's important to make the change. So we looked at alternatives. The first alternative we looked at was the current vendor. The current vendor does have a new Windows-based system. However, we don't think that that system would meet all of Milton's needs. It doesn't include modules for accounting and utility billing, it doesn't include the connection to the MTRS, the Mass Teachers Retirement System, so we'd still have to go through that process. It's not a Massachusetts-based company with Massachusetts-based solutions. So we don't think that this would serve the needs of the town and the schools. That vendor claims 17 Massachusetts clients, but they've identified only three, and the estimated cost is approximately $100,000. We looked at a second alternative. Oh, I didn't, I missed that slide, so you missed all of that good stuff. Hopefully, you heard it well. Yeah. The other, another vendor we looked at is a vendor that's used in a number of Massachusetts communities. However, we understand the cost to be significantly more, in the range of $700,000, so we haven't spent a lot of time pursuing that vendor. We've used our time pursuing what we've seen as more cost-effective vendors. The next vendor we've looked at, excuse me, does provide a package, a software package that would meet all of Milton's needs. We've had this vendor out, as we've had the current vendor out twice, to make demonstrations to town employees to show what could be done. We think that this vendor would meet all of Milton's needs. It does have a connection to MTRS, it does have utility billing and collections. Excuse me, this is a Massachusetts-based vendor that identifies 132 clients in Massachusetts, including many communities around here, around Milton. They also claim 26 of its clients as former clients of our current vendor, and they claim nine clients as former clients as the more expensive vendor. So this is a, this is a vendor that we see that is moving in the right direction. The quote that we have from that vendor is a one-time cost for all modules of $274,000. There is an alternative to this, and that is, that vendor would allow us to break up the different modules. So the first cost, if we did the, what we've identified as the three primary, or the three most important initial modules, accounting, treasury functions, and payroll, we could purchase that for $153,000 and be locked in for the additional two modules for at least the next year. So that is an option, breaking up the different modules, introducing one one year, three one year, and then two the next year. And so that's an option. Now, I think it's important for me at this point, before we move to the request, just to briefly address some of the thoughtful suggestions that were made at CitizenSpeak tonight relating to this. And this is best as I understood those suggestions. The first one was that there was a concern that implementing a new software system for financial accounting, I don't think there was any dispute, at least from CitizenSpeak, that this is needed. The question is how you do it, what are the best alternatives? There was a concern that there would be a need for consultants to implement a system like this. The cost that we have that's quoted includes all implementation and all consulting, so as we understand it, there wouldn't be consulting and implementation costs beyond what is offered in that package. So it's not a situation where we're just buying a software off the shelf, and then we're going to have to go and hire a consultant. That company and these vendors, and all of these vendors, provide implementation and support and consulting services to help you through that transition. Second, there was a suggestion about outsourcing services, and outsourcing certain parts payroll, and looking at other options for outsourcing. We have not looked at options that would segregate the different systems in the town. We have been looking for options that would integrate and consolidate, and we think that's the better way to go. There may be options for outsourcing payroll, but those are not options that, it doesn't appear, that other towns like us are pursuing. It seems like the better-run systems are those that are integrated rather than segregated. There was a suggestion that other, bigger vendors might provide more cost-effective solutions. It's been our review that some of these, in terms of the software providers, particularly with some of the new vendors, Massachusetts-based providers, are providing solutions for municipalities, not, and they were very specific, and I think Amy and Glenn can speak to this, there are very specific needs for municipalities, excuse me, municipalities that are not needed and that are different from the needs of private companies. And so we have focused on providers that provide for the needs of municipalities, which are different and distinct from those of private companies. So we focused on those kinds of vendors, the kinds of vendors that respond to the needs that we have, rather than just, you know, others. So I think these are helpful suggestions. We've looked at this over the last 10 months, we've met about 28, 29 times, we've had demonstrations from different vendors, we've spent a lot of time, and certainly, I think, would be willing to entertain any kind of suggestions, but these are the best solutions we've come up with after all that work in the last several months. So, based on that, our request is to segregate the, we think the best solution, given the financial realities, is to segregate the replacement of software into the first three categories, accounting, treasury functions, and payroll, which would be about $160,000 this year, and then to pick up with the other two, which would be collections and utility billing in fiscal 2017. And so, our request is that you support the Board of Selectmen in proposing that and seeking that funding for updating the financial accounting software. So I'm sure I've left things out, and perhaps the other members of the committee can supplement, and if you all have any questions, please feel free. Do you all have anything you want correct than I said directly?
The only thing I would like to add is... I just wanted to add that that cost also includes training.
So Mike, could you just tell us which one of those, it's the middle one, the one that seemed like it was the, which one, could you go back to the screen that shows us the actual?
Yes, the vendors.
The vendor that you'd like to adopt.
Right. And so the vendor for the alternatives two, I guess, three and four, it's the same vendor.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, look, this is our best estimate of what the pricing would be based on the vendors that we've seen. So, you know, maybe there's another vendor, better vendor out there for $160,000, we haven't found it.
Right.
But that's what we think would solve what has been a vaccine problem for this town for quite a while, as I understand it.
So the payroll system isn't an HRIS system, is that correct? It's just really the payroll processing?
That's right. It's not integrated, and Amy and Glenn may want to go into detail.
The one that we currently have is not, but this new software would be HR and payroll.
Oh, it would be?
And they would share one employee file.
Yep.
So on the school side, there's multiple fields to track certifications and those kinds, licensing, where you can do reports based upon expiration dates and print reports these teachers are due for recertification, all kinds of fields everywhere, anything you can think of that you might need, that it's really unlimited, whereas the system we have now, very limited to what you can, there's not even a termination date on an employee.
I don't think there's any question that we need to move into a new system. The question is, the reason I asked was, if it wasn't going to be, could it integrate in the future? Because I think that's something we definitely need. So that's great. And quite frankly, if you need to sell this to others, I would include that in there, because that's huge for the school department, I think.
Huge.
Correct.
We're one of the Excel spreadsheet.
Yes, yes. And then, one other question. So, and this is where I'm getting a little confused, in the town software line item on our spreadsheet from scenarios, it's $215,000. Is there a reason that there's a difference?
I don't know that.
Those are numbers from the warrant committee. That wasn't, that part of the spreadsheet wasn't done jointly with the Capitol Committee. He didn't have the actual numbers, so I think he was just plugging what he thought in that scenario was left of the free cash, and it didn't happen to fund the full amount.
Okay, that's fine. And so the $40,000 or so dollars of maintenance and hosting fees, is that built into the request for the FY '16 budget?
The current maintenance fees under the current vendor are about $62,000 a year. So it would actually, if we just did the first three modules, it would be a net savings.
Still have to pay it on the old one.
We have to pay it on the old.
Overall, it's going to stay pretty consistent.
Right.
It's going to be neutral.
And when you have all the five modules, again, it's about $60,000, so.
Thank you.
Going to hear this again at town meeting?
Definitely gets differentiated.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the Town School Consolidation Committee would commit $160,000 for the accounting, payroll, and treasury modules for fiscal '16, and the additional amount for the remaining modules in fiscal '17.
Second.
All in favor of the motion? Unanimous.
I'd just like to thank the committee for that work. I mean, this has been something that's been talked about for a very long time, and you guys made it happen, so thank you for that.
So several weeks ago, the selectmen asked us to collaborate with them on an exercise to try to project the town's financial picture over the next five years. And before I go any further, I would like to thank the superintendent and both assistant superintendents, and my finance subcommittee colleagues, Ms. Kelly and Mr. Zulis, because I think we now have a five-year financial projection that we can present to the selectmen and the warrant committee that is both thoughtful and useful. That's not good. So, what the task was, was to think about what the level service requirements would be over the next five years. And that was defined as the services, staff, and programs that were included in fiscal '15 budget, which was the base budget that both the town and the schools were asked to work from. We divided that exercise into three important steps, and again, I'd like to thank the superintendent and both assistant superintendents, because they provided us with what they saw as the key educational priorities, which I'll show you in just a moment, but we thought that those should serve as guiding principles in any sort of planning that we do. We then wanted to develop the key assumptions about cost increases and how those would develop over the next five years. And in order to ensure that we looked at the budget on a comprehensive basis, we developed assumptions in each of the major budget categories that you're used to seeing, policy and administration, instructional leadership, instruction, instructional services, special education, technology, and facilities. And then, we handed all the work over to Dr. Pavlicek and asked him to apply those assumptions to the fiscal '15 budget figure. So those are the spreadsheets that you saw. We thought it was important, though, to talk about context. We thought it was important, though, to talk about context, because the school committee and the Milton Public Schools differ from other departments in a number of important ways. One is that they have statutory obligations. The second is that they have some mandates. We have to accommodate any enrollment increases. We have to accommodate any students from other districts that become residents in the town, and we have to accommodate any special education support and services requirements that occur. That creates a different requirement for cost projections than most other departments would have. And in addition, we've set a goal for ourselves that every student will achieve at a proficient level of academic performance, but I should mention that that's also a mandate from the state. They've asked every school district to try to achieve that. I think we're ahead of most districts in that regard, but it is still a mandate from the state. So in terms of key priorities, what we identified, primarily through the educational leadership team, was that the early literacy advancement initiative should continue to be a priority. The proficiency gap advancement initiative should continue to be a priority. Improving science and STEM performance should continue to be a priority. Upgrading digital technology and the impacts that that has on instruction should continue to be a priority, and maintaining class sizes and the breadth and scope of academic and extracurricular offerings. So, as I said earlier, those are our guiding principles. In terms of assumptions, and I can go through all of these if you'd like, but in the policy and administration area, we assume that the merit budgets and the cost of living adjustments for our HRS employees, HR non-union employees, will be reasonably consistent with current trends, so they will stay about the same in terms of cost increases we would anticipate. We assume that we would need larger legal budgets in those years where we're doing collective bargaining. On the special education side, we're assuming 5% cost increases in out-of-district tuitions, 6% annual increases in sped services costs. We assume that circuit breaker, which is a reimbursement that we get, as you know, would continue to at about current levels, which is approximately 70%. We assume that the annual increases in the Medicaid reimbursements will match the sped service cost increases. We assumed 3% increases in sped staffing costs and 3% increases in sped transportation. Technology, we assume that the cost of replacing hardware, which we're, by the way, we're trying to do some of that on the operating budget side in addition to our capital request. We're assuming 6% increases in those costs. On the facility side, 6% increases in maintenance, 5% increases in utilities. Instruction, collective bargaining increases, similarly, we thought would be reasonably consistent with our current trends, and we're assuming annual 2% increases in our staffing costs to meet what we anticipate to be approximately 2% enrollment increases each year. In instructional services area, we're assuming that the annual charge-offs to food services and community schools will remain relatively consistent, assuming a 5% increase in regular education transportation costs in fiscal year 18, which is when the contracts will be renegotiated. And if you take all that, what we asked Dr. Pavlicek to do was to take each of those assumptions by budget category, weight them according to their proportion in the budget, develop overall cost increases for our salary and non-salary lines, and if you do all of that, we get roughly a 5% annualized increase, blended growth increase, and if you apply that across the five years, these are the numbers that we would be looking at. So I think we've got a very solid foundation, both in terms of understanding and articulating for the Selectmen and the Warrant Committee what our educational priorities would be, and also a very solid foundation in being able to justify what we see as the increases that we could anticipate and they should anticipate over the next five years. Questions?
Well, just one, and that's that we just heard about our utilities going up more than 5%, which is budgeted for, so I was wondering about that.
That's the delivery cost, that's part of the utility bill, so it's not, it's not the entire electric bill, that's for just a portion of the electric bill.
Thank you.
Ms. Kelly?
So I'm sorry, I'm going to follow up on that. The 30%, I don't think I heard in any of our discussions at the finance subcommittee level, and so I guess what I'm just wondering, should that be bumped up a little bit? If you look at the numbers in utilities from one year to the next, there is not a significant increase, and are we saying that you're confident that, given whatever the new contract is, that the projections that we have in here are sound? I don't know the timing of when the contractual...
The contract is a two-year contract on utilities. This has been the average annual increase over the last six years. You know, we went for several years where we had no increase, that we have a bump this year, we're locked in for next year, I don't know what we're going to see in two years. So I'm working off a historical average, because that's all I can really do. I have no idea where, you know, what kind of a contract we're going to be able to sign in two years. So, I mean, we just worked back half a dozen years, six, eight years, and looked at what turns out to be the average annual increase in these and projecting that going forward, rather than trying to, you know, deal with the up and down vagaries of the market.
So my only concern is that from '14 to '15, we actually go down fairly significantly. So if we got, if we get '15 wrong, which is the year we're in, then everything that we're projecting out becomes off.
'14, we had a one-time payment, for instance, about $30,000 in water. We had a couple anomalies in '14 that pushed it up. So '14 is actually high by a hair because of the past, the back-to-s sewer, the back-to-water and sewer bill and so forth. So there were, '14's a kind of anomalous year.
It's about $70,000 more than we have in our budget this year. And I guess maybe the best question is, year-to-date, in the contract that has electricity charges higher, in that 30% range that we discussed, right, are we running at budget in terms of your projections?
I'm just preparing the second quarter report now. I'll look at it more closely. Last I looked at it, which was in the middle of December we were, but I will, the rates kicked in in mid-November.
So we had a long time.
And this was a low month, yeah, so, I mean, we haven't had a long history yet. But I'm running the second quarter reports now, so I'll have a better read on that.
Ms. Kelly?
So I guess my suggestion is that we should bump that up. I mean, I think, I appreciate the work that's gone into the process thus far. This is news to me, I don't know, maybe I missed it along the way. So I just think, just to be on the safe side, seeing that '15, and we don't have a long track record in '15, to see really what the impact of the new contract is going to be on our electric prices, that if we bump up, I mean, we're not going to change '15, but certainly change '16 and then going forward, I think that is a prudent thing to do in terms of the long range.
What's your recommendation for the assumption?
See, I don't have any concept, and I don't have the details in the utility line, so I couldn't even venture to guess. But I guess I would ask that we appropriate some additional dollars to that line, whatever Dr. Pavlicek, you know, sees fit.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So I think the motion is to approve the financial projections with the proviso that Dr. Pavlicek review again the utilities assumption and adjust it as needed.
That's exactly what I said.
I was just, I like to say what you said.
I couldn't, but I bet you, Mr. Warren.
Ms. Kelly has recommended approval of the five-year projections with the proviso that the utilities assumption be reviewed again by Dr. Pavlicek and adjusted as needed. Ms. Sheridan?
Maybe, maybe, I'm not sure if this is part of the vote discussion or outside of the vote discussion, but, so, I know this is what the Selectmen asked us to do, so what are the next steps with this after that?
The next steps are a joint meeting between the school committee, the Warrant Committee, and the Selectmen to discuss the townwide financial five-year projections. And they're looking, Ms. Fagan is looking for a date when we could do such a meeting. It would probably be, they think, the first or second week in February?
Thank you.
One of the things that has been generated from this, Amy Dexter's put it together, we have a spreadsheet with this for the various different departments in the town, various different costs in the town and so forth, so that when it's all put together, we'll be able to do things like plug in an override number for a particular year and see how long it will carry us forward and things like that. That was the ultimate goal of this, was to be able to project the needs of the community forward, so you could say, you know, with as much confidence as one can come up with projecting the future, that, you know, an override of X dollars should satisfy us for two years, or how much would it take to satisfy, to keep us for three years, or something like that. So, I mean, that was the ultimate goal. And so this will become a line item in that, and then we've accumulated this similar data from other departments and so forth, so it'll give us a picture of the town going forward five years.
May I just ask a follow-up on that? So free cash has been available that we have not anticipated, and so I appreciate all the work and effort that's going into this, but free cash appears, and is there a way to kind of figure out going forward or project what free cash would, could, maybe be, or is that just?
Very difficult. I mean, we can look at what's happened over the last three years where we've had a reasonable amount of free cash and try to analyze backwards why it came that way, and to the extent that you can make adjustments in your planning based on that, you know, for instance, if a certain amount of it is due to increased revenue over expectations for certain items, well then you can, you know, increase your expectations in the spreadsheet going forward.
Right.
To the extent that some of it is due to returns of unspent money in budgets, because, you know, a department was budgeted to hire a new staff member but couldn't hire that person for four months and therefore had a surplus in their, you know, personnel line, that's probably not projectable. The spreadsheet we were looking at does not project significant amounts of free cash going forward, because it would be wrong to count on that. So you have to take a very conservative approach, you know, there are those of us who remember negative free cash from not too many years ago, so it's the sort of thing you certainly don't want to bank on.
No, I wasn't proposing that we bank on it, just that it feels like it's pennies from heaven, but there, I was just, you answered my question perfectly, so I think that looking at where it comes from and how that impacts.
And you also look at, from a management's perspective, you can have policies on what you do with it when it comes in and what you don't do with it when it comes in, you know, and does free cash go to supplement capital purchases, or does it go into, you know, supplement stabilization or into, you know, OPEB issues for post-employment benefits or so forth? I mean, there are policies that, you know, towns can make as to what to do about such things, and generally having those policies is seen as being a good idea.
Thanks, Glenn.
On the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous.
I just ask, do we have a meeting scheduled, a date scheduled for that joint?
Or?
The joint warrant committee?
No, not yet. They're looking for a date. So I have one more, let's do budget cuts. Ms. Kelly, do you want to introduce that budget cut reduction list on the finance subcommittee?
I wasn't ready. I thought, didn't you have something else?
Yeah, I do have something else while we're doing that. So, a month and a half or so ago, Superintendent Commission Laura O'Dwyer, if you remember Ms. O'Dwyer, to take another look at the performance of students in the French and English programs and to compare that performance. She's completed that work and has sent us both an executive summary and the data. We'll be sending that out to you tomorrow, but she's also offered to do a presentation to the school committee. Problem is that she teaches on Wednesday nights, so she's not available for our regular meetings, and it's getting hard to schedule all of us. So working with Charlene, who has the master calendar, the two dates that look like they might work for Ms. O'Dwyer and her assistant, who actually performed this research, and for the school committee and the superintendent to be available, are January 29th or February 5th. So if you could tell me whether you might be available on either or both of those days, then I will try to schedule this presentation for the date when the most school committee members are available. I'm not sure we're going to be able to get everyone, but I'll try my best. Okay.
So we've come to the part of the budgeting process that is the very most difficult, in that we've identified a gap, and we need to, we need to identify within the budget where those dollars will come from. So, given our earlier vote, do we, can we like, yes, that's exactly what I was looking So before getting the information from Chairman Walker about the Warrant Committee and Board of Selectmen, well, not, anyways, the discussions around how much finances would be available, we were looking to bridge a $1 million gap in our present FY '16 budget. Given the earlier vote and discussions, we basically have been able to bring that down to $500,000. Even $500,000 is a very difficult task, as you'll see as we go through each of these, and so I guess I would ask the administration to talk about what the cuts being proposed are, and, you know, to some extent, the impact of those cuts.
Thank you, Member Kelly. To put this in context, if somebody just began watching this presentation, we meet every week, every Tuesday morning, the central office administrators with the finance subcommittee, Mary Kelly, Mike Zulis, and Leroy Walker, Mary Kelly being the chair. And so, to Mrs. Kelly's point, we were then assigned, if we were not fully funded, what would be the budget cuts that we have to make. Today, Janet Chan and Dr. Pavlicek and I spoke to the staff, because members of our staff live in the town of Milton, and they might be watching tonight. And so we wanted staff to know and hear it from me, and then I told them that we'll keep them abreast, and I told them how fluid, how many meetings this finance subcommittee has put into this, and I described to them that we meet with the leadership team of principals and coordinators. and coordinators, then we meet with the finance subcommittee, and we analyze every one of these cuts or reductions, we talk about every one of these, and the school committee, I told them, is keenly aware that these are connected, every one of these is connected to a Milton Public School employee. And so I explained to them that this town has a history of, the town, I say publicly, the town is its schools, public schools, and the public schools of the town, and how every Milton Public School parent wants for their child. And I explained to them that now, under the leadership of the school committee, we address each of the PTO parents groups, they give outstanding feedback to us. Chairman Walker said the other day at one of our meetings, we, the school committee listens to the feedback, the feedback we'll get tonight, and the feedback from the parents, and uses that feedback as more budget dollars become available and we're able to close this gap. So I want people to understand, I wanted the teachers today, we did two presentations, 70 teachers in one group, with one, one day notice because we were working with the selectmen and town hall that teachers came after school to hear this presentation. So we're going to detail these recommended cuts and reductions to you now. And I want to also frame it that I said to the teachers today, and I say to the public, we have 4,000 children and 500 employees, and every year the children change, and the curriculum changes, you heard the call he caught tonight, and I analogized today that park was not a word in the vocabulary of any educator three short years ago. English language learners were the requirements that we have to meet now. So we live on demand dates, so every year, I said to them, you're going to see some of these cuts or reductions, but every year the demands of the 4,000 clients change, the needs of the students change. So I brought them back to, you know, Mary Kelly sat here years ago when there would be 20, 30 teachers on a cut reduction list, and so I said to them, this, we're really responding to the needs of the district. So beginning at the elementary level, we have worked hard and long with the teachers in art and music, and the parents who are advocates for art and music in the Milton Public Schools that have come to this table. We shared research about the correlation to exposure to art and music, to academic performance, and so we have built up over the years, I said today, at grades four and five, to have an art lesson of 30 minutes is really difficult. By the time you set up the art lesson, Member Sheridan, who knows elementary, is shaking her head in agreement, we moved that up to 45 minutes at grades four and five, minute outlet, 45 minute. So if we are not fully funded, we are going to have to reduce art at grades four and five from 45 minutes to 30-minute classes. At kindergarten, I told the teachers today, I say that Milton Public School parents are really smart, they're outstanding consumers, and so our full-day kindergarten program, we have 330 children in full-day kindergarten, and five parents choose half-day. I don't believe they choose half-day because of the curriculum, they choose half-day because that's their choice in their child's education. So we have, as I told you, next week, that night, I mean, it is an amazing night of parents coming out in the middle of January, these parents have vested the first day of kindergarten, and so the kindergarten curriculum, the assessments that are done, the work we do, pushing kindergarten instruction, these parents want art, music, library, and physical education for their children. One of our recommended cuts is to reduce art and music at the kindergarten level to every other week. So one week a child would have art, the next week a child would have music, and again, we're able to meet our contractual obligations. I explained today, and this school committee understands, but for the viewing public, we do this as a K-12 team. You can't eliminate art at the middle school but have art at the elementary and art at the high school. And we have watched over the years, when we had chorus at grades three, four, and five, and we've reduced chorus to only grade five, we have seen a reduction in the number of students at the middle school who want to enroll in chorus. So you have to have these feeder programs, and my analogy, just like an advanced placement class, you don't wake up at the 11th grade, this is an education K-12, we have to work with middle school parents around challenge for all students. These feeder programs, you don't stop the violin at the 11th grade, these feeder programs begin at the elementary level, but our recommendation is to eliminate chorus at grade five. Grade five students would still have music, but working with the music department and the fine arts director, we had talked about chorus music, it would eliminate chorus for all grade five students. You heard about, and we didn't plan this tonight, and I think it was Member Kelly who introduced it, this preschool exponentially is growing. I told the teachers today, and Ms. Kelly said that her own child was in the classroom, years ago, we had one preschool classroom that was housed at Milton High School, one preschool classroom. We now have four preschool classrooms that run, some programs run, service two groups of children a day. This preschool program, we, I explained to those high school teachers today, when you're 2.9 or 2.6 years old, and you have special needs, you become involved in the public schools in your communities. And these children provided services beginning at three years of age, and role models tuition in, and I have to tell you, this preschool, Holly, it was unbelievable, when she was speaking tonight, has become like another school, and the finance subcommittee understands it's almost like running two schools within one school, and you can see, we probably take three calls a day from Holly Concanon and work with the sped director on the preschool. The recommendation in the advancement budget was a half-time sped coordinator, preschools coordinator, who would have special ed background and work in that program. We've recommended not funding that program, that position. We have a step program, again, the school building project and the commitment of the Milton School Committee in this community was to build special ed programs within the district, so that these costly out-of-district placements, parents of children with special needs, they want their children, I want to repeat this to you, they want their children in the home schools, they want their children to go to neighborhood schools, they don't want half-hour and hour-long special ed van bus rides. And so we have come so far in the last 10 years, building these programs, and the parents and guardians of these children can go to these private placements and come to our programs, and they're able to go to the team meetings and make choices. And to a parent, where, where our programs and the results of these programs, parents are choosing to stay in the Milton Public Schools. They're costly programs to create, but more costly is this out-of-district placement. Forget the cost, the right thing to do is to create unbelievable programs within the Milton Public Schools. We have a program that houses children from across the district who have emotional issues, and this program can run anywhere from four children to nine or 11 children, and we, and I have to tell you, I attribute Principal Jonathan Redden and the two teachers in the program to really the security of that program, the success. Children sometimes mainstream totally out of the program, it's now housed at the Glover, and so we would look to restructure that program based on the anticipated number of children, but I have to tell you that this is a cut that, in special ed, that we're not sure that we can make. But right now, when we're looking at the population of children for next year, we believe that we could reduce one teacher in that program. At the middle school, the public and the school committee are familiar with hearing this reduction. I told the teachers today, one of the jewels I call of the school district, and I look at smiles in the audience, is the team approach at the middle school. So you're in your elementary schools, your neighborhood schools, you all come together at the middle school, and since the Reverend George Moran created this middle school model with the teams, I probably hear more about the names of the teams at the middle school than I do the individual teachers. And these children are in a team, parents come in and they meet with the English and the math, and the history teacher, a science teacher on the team, this would, and again, we've protected those teams, this would be the first really assault at that team approach, taking the history teacher at seven and eight, grade seven and eight, off-team. And so when parents come in, teams sit down on, and they talk about every child on the team, this teacher would be off-team. Again, I said to the teachers today, I'll say to the public, driven by the finance subcommittee and a leadership team, we do this together, we look at every level of the district, administrators, teachers, support people, and so there's a recommendation to replace one of the vice principals at the middle school with the dean. And so I explained today to the teachers who understand this, that what will happen with doing this, when you have an administrator, that administrator in the new evaluation tool can do these evaluations, the administrators, when it comes to discipline, and if it comes to dealing with families, administrators really take those roles to chair those meetings. The dean is a program, a, what am I trying to say, a position that's in several middle and high schools, they use these deans as opposed to vice principals. So we have two vice principals at the middle, two vice principals at the high school, I'll tell you the confidence I have that the high school vice principals is, I'll, I'll deal with a vice principal at our, in our schools any day if I can't reach the high school principal. That's how effective they are. Our recommendation is to, again, this is driven by the budget, is to replace one of the vice principals by, with a dean at the middle school, not our choice, but looking at every level of the district. At the middle school, we've recommended a .2 reduction in an art teacher, a .2 reduction in a music teacher, and a .2 reduction in a computer teacher. I said today to this very attentive group of teachers that Milton parents and school committee members are very smart. This would eliminate options for students at the middle school, it will increase class size in the other electives, and when we go out to the PTOs, the parents understand, and I said today, that teachers are looking, this is a competitive market, we're competitive, we're a competitive organization, that Mr. Zulis is looking to streamline our finances. So all of these teachers are looking for full-time positions. For me to hire and the administrators to hire .8 positions, those, those are not going to be the teachers that are hired until next Labor Day at the end of the summer, and they're going to be difficult to fill. Talented, we're, we're, we get in competition with districts, to fill a .8 position is going to impact our teaching force, it's, but even more important than that, it's going to decrease offerings for students, and it's going to increase the class size. I gave them the analogy, James Jet referred to the high school. With his anticipated cuts, I believe, let's talk about 200, let's say, when we get to the high school, 200 or 220 children in one of the seven periods are not going to be, if we add up the elective reductions at the high school, and so his analogy is, where are these children going to go? It's going to up the enrollment in other classes, and it's going to eliminate options. Mary Gormley's analogy is, the student who comes to school for auto, who's driven by the other six periods of the day, but it's auto that brings that child to school, or it's music theory that brings that child to school, or the music teacher who every morning's looking at that child's progress report and urging them to excel in their other classes because they want to go to university to study music. So again, every one of these cuts and reductions is an impact of a Milton Public School teacher who's impacting students all day. At the high school, these, again, these recommended reductions are going to eliminate course offerings, you understand this language as well as I do, and decrease offerings and increase enrollment. The recommendation is a .2 reduction of an art teacher at Milton High, we have two tenured art teachers with professional status, one of those individuals will, again, this is why I dealt with the teachers and the principals, Ms. Kelly asked me about this, before my presentation, the principals approached every teacher who could possibly be impacted on this list. So they're not hearing it from somebody who's watching it tonight or watching it, they're not hearing me in an auditorium full of teachers, they were approached by their individual teachers and department heads today. These are recommended cuts and reductions, I said, this is a very fluid process, this, this town has been committed to its public schools, and they work to fully fund the budget, but we've been asked to come up with this assignment. So a .2 reduction of an art teacher at Milton High, a .2 reduction of a music teacher at Milton High, a .2 reduction of a business technology teacher at Milton High School, a .2 reduction of a teacher in family and consumer studies, and a 1.0 real language teacher at Milton High. District-wide, again, bringing you back to, we look at every level of the organization. I told the teachers today that Chairman of the Finance Subcommittee, Mary Kelly, urged Dr. Pavlicek and myself to look at every one of the lines in the budget, to look at every one of, to look at the, I used your analogy of computers, Ms. Kelly. We're talking tonight, we were urged to look at our utility lines, we were urged to look at our computer lines, and so we have to run the organization. So we looked at the district, and we're recommending, in the special ed office, we have two secretaries. One secretary is a .9, and the other full-time secretary, they do all of the input of the IEP plans, they manage the sped transportation, again, they work with the special ed director, Director of Pupil Personnel, to actually run that school within the school, we're recommending the reduction of one of those secretaries. The next recommendation that we're, we've put on this cut reduction list is to level fund special education transportation. And again, special education is, and we, we meet, Central Office and the Special Education Leadership Team, every other Thursday, we go over the names of every child who's in a special ed outplacement, we look at the names of children who might be moving into out-of-district placements, we analyze and look at the special ed transportation, every two weeks, we look at this volatile bottom line. Again, I explained to the teachers today, I'm explaining to you and the viewing public, based on being able to create these programs in district, Dr. Pavlicek and the Director of Pupil Personnel are, have put up a $27,000 reduction in special ed transportation for next year. We looked at our copier replacement reduction program, I told the teachers today, Dr. Pavlicek has done an outstanding job pulling in all the maintenance contracts, actually having a maintenance program on every copier in the district, moving copiers that are less used to more highly-used areas, and we're looking at a, recommending a $5,000 reduction in that copier replacement program, program that he's come up with, that would set that program back. And I said to the teachers today, I've said to the finance subcommittee, we prioritize people, but if it weren't for the Milton Foundation for Education, our teachers, you heard about Blue Hills Grant, this Donors Choose, the advancement budget, we have, this professional development in text materials and supplies line is so important, and, and we've worked so hard to inch up that budget over the years, and when we went to warrant committee, we told the story that we have become, and we spend an inordinate amount of time, I often say, I, doing fundraising. And so this, this is not a line that should be supplemented with fundraising, and, you know, I've said publicly, I go to every month with Ms. Pedera to the Milton Foundation of Education, they do not want to assume the taxpayers' responsibility, they want to enhance the experience of every Milton Public School child. So this, these two, these next recommendations in professional development, the reduction of $33,000 in next year's budget, in text materials and supplies, a reduction of $20,000 in text materials and supplies in next year's Milton Public School budget. The charge was, if you weren't fully funded, if we weren't fully funded and we had to make reductions of $500,000, this is absolutely- make reductions of $500,000, this is absolutely with, I would say, am I saying correctly, 15 different meetings with the Finance Subcommittee? Mr., Dr. Pavlicek shaking his head in agreement. And the leadership team, we would sometime meet with the Finance Subcommittee, that afternoon, meet with the leadership team, go back to the Finance Subcommittee. They have asked every question. They have looked at this list, and I shared the million-dollar list, not knowing what the vote would be tonight, with the teachers today. But we, we think that maybe that was in a context of them understanding. And I committed to them on behalf of the leadership team, I can't, I, I didn't speak for the school committee, but I said, they're tireless and they're rough. And this district, the warrant committee, the selectmen, town meeting, I said, I say that the school committee, the graduation and the kindergarten information night, two of my highlights. That town meeting, fully funding the Milton Public School budget last night, I sat next to Mike Zulis, and I said, this was the best night of my school year last year, to know that the teachers were in place and the text materials and supplies had been purchased for the Milton Public Schools to do their work with our 4,000 children. Means a tremendous amount. So this is the recommendation of the leadership team, if the Milton Public Schools aren't fully funded. And every one of these recommended cuts will impact teaching and learning, but it's the recommendation of the full leadership group.
Questions?
So just, I just wanted to make, ask, I have a couple of questions, but just to make something clear. So this is a cut list, assuming we have to make $500,000 in cuts, but the advancement budget's already in our budget, that's already funded. Okay. So, first question, the 30-plus, do we know around what those class sizes would be? Thirty, I mean, we're at 30 now in some classes. Are we talking 35, 37? Are we talking 31, 32? Do we know around what those class sizes would be?
All going to be 30 and up, but what I can do is, with the high school, do an analysis of that for the next meeting. And once you ask, when we go out, we'll incorporate that into our presentations for parents. So it's dual, I'm going to repeat myself.
Yeah.
It's a double impact. Offerings are going to be eliminated, and class size in the other electives are going to increase.
Okay. So, I mean, in looking at all of this, there are a couple of things that come to mind. First of all, you know, I agree with Superintendent Gormley. I think that the 30-minute art class, especially for grades four and five, is pretty useless. And so you're essentially kind of cutting art from those grades. Using art and music every other week in kindergarten is disappointing. I think it also comes to mind that the MFE's whole push this year is called Full Steam Ahead, which is, you know, protecting art and allowing all these, raising money to enrich art, and we're cutting it from those three grades. Eliminating chorus, that's always on the list, and I think it's a mistake. And then the preschool coordinator has to be the fastest-cut position ever seen on the board, you know, something that I had said, you know, we're looking at advancement, this is something that needs to be done. That, I think all the principals at the elementary school are overwhelmed, and Calicoth especially, they have the largest group of students, and they have the preschool with no preschool director. And we've also, I believe in the advancement, have had it, added money to expand our preschool programs, yet we're not going to have a preschool coordinator. Middle and hi, the high school, I've just already talked about, the, the decreased offerings, pushing those class sizes up is bad, obviously. And, you know, just for the middle school, for people that don't know, the computer class is something that, that's where kids kind of learn how to use the, not just use the computer programs, but learn how to type and be able to do their papers quickly instead of searching out keys. It's important. Now, there's a lot of kids that probably won't be able to take, take that, and the art and music is important too. But for all those reasons, I just, I don't know if I can support this vote of these cuts in lieu of, moving forward advancement budget is great and all that, we've heard about how wonderful it is, but not if we're going to cut all these other programs in lieu of moving, targeting some areas based on test scores. I just, I just can't do it. I think that we have to protect all these programs, and these are programs that are in existence. We can't add other things and then cut out of other things unless we're saying those things aren't important. So I have a hard time supporting this cut list for those reasons.
Sharon?
So, thank you, Ms. Gormley. I think, Mrs. Kelly asked you to, you know, give an impact statement, and by virtue of your impact statement, I don't think it was an easy sell, because you just, you know, you made, the impact statements speak for themselves. There is a huge impact to these, I'm sorry, for all of these cuts. I agree with the comments that Mrs. Padera made around art and music. If you're cutting those times, you might, it's, that's an, that just can't work to have 30 minutes. It's, it's not appropriate. I appreciate the restructuring of step and, and knowing that that's, you know, that, looking at the places where you can really maybe make some changes, like if, if your enrollment projection, you know, that, that seems like a good one to me. I think history off the teams, as much as it's great to have it on there, that's not a really drastic one. Putting a dean in instead of a vice principal is, you know, again, it's something that isn't as painful as some of our direct impact for students. So when I look at these, and I know that in years past, we've kind of opened with our potential cut lists by saying that our, every effort is made to make cuts so that we're not putting, we're not taking away teachers from, in front of children. And I know that, that that's very hard to do because we are a lean school district. We don't have a lot of people at, at, you know, I almost said Court Street, sorry. In the, God, wrong, yes. Sorry. In the superintendent's office. We don't have extra secretaries. We really, we, there aren't extra people around. But having said that, I think that we do need to think very carefully, and I know that this wasn't made to us lightly. I know a lot of thought and, and consideration went into this. But I, I have to say that there are things on here that I would have a very hard time approving. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna say yes or no, it's going to be really hard for me to approve this cut list, because there are some items on here that I would just really have a hard time with. And just one more, one question or one clarification. The sped transportation piece, how is it we think we can save money in sped transportation?
By the anticipated students that will be inside the district not taking the distance ride to the out-of-district placement.
Not going outside. Oh, okay. Good.
I must not have made myself clear.
No, no, I probably was writing down my own notes.
Yeah, this is, this is a $900,000 line item, says about a 3% reduction.
If I might, may I?
Certainly.
So this advan, these advancement initiatives, again, Janet, Chairman Walker repeated what Janet Sheehan said the other day, and these are mandates to close these achievement gaps and to have all children reading at the end of grade three. And I said to the teachers today, and I'll say when we go out to the parents, I want people to call their relatives in other school districts. Four years ago, we had no reading teachers at the elementary. We had no reading teachers. To your point about being lean, we prioritize the classroom teacher. We had no reading teachers. We're seeing a correlation with the reading teachers at grades one and two, and the number of children who have to, who are going in and having IEPs. And so we are committed to these initiatives. You heard science, and so I know that we don't want to talk about the students being tested, but we sit here and, I heard every one of you, could you describe those science scores? Could you explain to me why those fourth-grade scores? And the way that that's going to be done is to put the curriculum in the hands of the teachers and to give them this professional development, and the reading teachers at grades one, two, and three. And we see a need in this district for a reading teacher, one reading teacher at the middle and one reading teacher at the high school. And we've worked with Finance Subcommittee and making recommendations to the warrant committee about one-time funds. So Dr. Pavlicek is working with Finance Subcommittee in those finance, in our finance meetings to identify, and we're very conscious that we're here for the long term, and so, but what, which funds can be just one-year funds in the advancement budget. But we, we don't want to eliminate any of these, but again, they're at the expense of all children have to be able to excel. And I want them to excel in art and music. Our, I said, nobody ever leaves the Milton Public Schools for a better art or music program. And so I couldn't be prouder. And again, you have children, it would be like eliminating one of your children. So this is, I talk about the best nights, this is the worst night. And that's the worst afternoon of my career, this day, every year, in the Milton Public Schools. When I have to say, the people who are on this list can see me morning, noon, and night, starting tomorrow, anytime they want, to see where they are on the reduction list. But I said to them, you live in a community that they're committed to their public schools. I haven't met a Milton Public School parent who didn't want for their child. So this community, the warrant committee, town hall, the town meeting, they're committed to finding these funds to support the Milton Public Schools. That's what I found, and that's what I committed, say, that they're not in a school district, they're not living in a town where, that don't, that doesn't value its public schools. I said, even people with children who aren't in the public schools, they, they understand the value of their public schools. So I said, we are committed, and none of these cuts or reductions came easily. And it, it is like choosing one child over another child.
Mr. Zulis?
So I've, I've said before, and I'll say again, that I don't consider myself in any way, shape, or form to be an expert in education. But now, I and we are faced with a choice. And we are faced with a budgetary choice that says we're going to have to cut $500,000 from our budget. And the administration has, the collective wisdom of the administration and the leadership team has presented us with this alternative, as their best collective judgment. Now, I don't see our group as a rubber stamp in any way, shape, or form, but if that collective wisdom of the experts is supported by a rationale and is the result of a rigorous disciplined process, then it is a, it is a judgment in making this choice that, that I have to support.
Ms. Kelly?
So I guess I'm going to ask if we might be open to taking a couple of the items in the additional cuts reduction list and moving them over into the initial and saving some things. And my suggestion would be, and I would like to hear whoever's opinion on it, is the second SRO and the custodian, or maybe half a custodian, move over into the initial cuts, the $500 list, and that we put back as much of the first item under elementary as possible.
So if I might reply to that? So for the viewing public to understand this, I think it's clear, but I'm going to say it again, we meet with the leadership team and the Finance Subcommittee. I go back to the leadership team and I'll say, did you, you know, I want you to think about this. We talked to Finance Subcommittee about this. I go to Finance Subcommittee and I say, this is the leadership team. It's not James Jet. Could you come back to a meeting tomorrow and tell us where your cuts are? Everybody owns the cuts and the reductions. It's done as a system. So I have to tell you, Ms. Kelly, that I would never sit here because I wanted everybody to understand how this process, I would never sit here and change it without sitting down with my leadership team. Because I have to tell you, they are vested. You know, again, you might recommend to change it, but I thought you were asking me if I change it right now.
Your opinion, I would most welcome, and I understand exactly what you just said. I guess I'm looking to my other members. And let me give you, so the second SRO, I'm asking because we haven't had a second SRO for this year. And so I understand we have an agreement, it would need to be worked out with the Board of Selectmen, but when you're talking about, you know, reducing kindergarten art and music and those kinds of things, it, it might be a, I don't know, to me, it may be a sounder judgment. When we're down, I mean, essentially, the process has changed from where we were before, which was saying, we need a million, we broke it into two buckets, to now saying, we've come to an agreement, for the most part, I think, and this is it, folks. So if we put it on this list, it's happening. Almost to the point, even before we go out to the PTOs, who we might hear back and them saying, so we're, we're in a different place than we have been in previous years. The reason I'm asking is I'd be interested to hear the other members who have heard some of, and know perhaps more about the, some of these things than I do. And the custodian, I, we heard Bill Ritchie, you know, it's tough to get it clean, but again, when we talk about cleaning the buildings versus an art and music teacher at the elementary, I don't know. Maybe it might be worth trying for a year. I don't know.
And so, if I might, so let's, on the process, I said to the teachers today, when we're working with the warrant committee, my impression was that as money becomes available, and my experience has been working with the, and these two gentlemen having been on the warrant committee, that we go back to warrant committee meetings, and they've trusted us. And so they'll say, we've, they can't tell you what to do, but they'll say, we've identified $50,000 or $100,000. We'd like you to put back those elementary specialists. And, you know, I, I told the teachers today, I remember school committee members as, as warrant committee members, and again, they become attached to this list. So I told the teachers today that between now and May, this is a fluid process. When funds become available, if funds are dedicated to the school, we'll go back to the Finance Subcommittee and the school committee, and positions will be put back. This list, I said, won't be the list that we go to town meeting with, hopefully. That funds will be identified, if, we told them about local aid, we explained to them about receipts. So again, we prioritize this, we spent, so my immediate reaction was, we do this as a team, and we spent a tremendous amount of time prioritizing, you know, to have to do the million-dollar cut list today. I'm very thankful, and we'll get word out to them tomorrow. So you're, you're asking your peers, I know, about recommending changing those two?
Right. And the only reason, again, I, I think we're in a different place than we have been in years past, but I, I'd like to hear those more knowledgeable than me on this. Perhaps Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't accept a more knowledgeable title, but I, I think, here's my, my general comment, and then I'll, I'll talk specifically about the custodian and the SRO. My general comment is that I, I know full well how difficult the leadership team meetings were, how difficult the process was, how much pushback there was. This, this is not a leadership team where people are afraid to speak up. So every single member of the leadership team I know had their say. And I am, I am reluctant, given that process and the number of Finance Subcommittee discussions we've had. I, I'm reluctant to second-guess that process at this point by saying, well, you know, what about this, what about that? That, that's our, that's our obligation and our responsibility, but I've, I've already done that, so I'm, I don't think I need to do it here in this forum. With regard to the, the custodian, I think we need to be very careful, because we did, we did eliminate a- did eliminate a custodian position, then we put it back. I thought about asking Bill, how many, how many custodians are really available and at work because there's a fair number, the last time I checked, that were on some long-term medical leave. So again, I'd be very reluctant to, we talked earlier about investment in infrastructure, I'd be very reluctant, I think we'd be short-sighted, to reduce a custodian. The SRO, I would only say that we signed an agreement with the Selectmen, which is specifically designed to ensure that we would make a three-year commitment. Because they were concerned when we said, well, we'd like to have a second SRO, they said, but don't come back in a year and say you're gonna eliminate this position. So I think we can do whatever we want, but we've got an agreement that says, that we committed that we wouldn't eliminate the position at least until the end of fiscal '16. So I, again, if, if the, if the leadership team was coming to us saying, you know, we've gone through this agonizing discussion and we need to eliminate the SRO, and I understand why it was on the $1 million list, so it was on the list, with the footnote that said, we'll require some negotiation with the Selectmen. But I just, I think any of us could look at the collective list and say, well, how about this, how about that? But I, I'm, I'm of the mind that I'm gonna respect the process that the superintendent led, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for the recommendations that the leadership team has made.
I'd just like to say I definitely respect the process. It's not that I don't. I know it's a really hard decision to make. I just, I just disagree with cutting all that art in the elementary level. It's just one of art and music, and I just think we've been down that road before, and we're going down it yet again. And I just, as Kelly had said, I think we are at a different stop in the process, and I've always been a little bit nervous with everything going on the list and just hoping that it doesn't get on the list, but I just don't feel comfortable taking that chance and putting myself behind it with that. That's the, that's one of the bigger items on there. There are other things that kind of don't sit well with me, but I would say I'm very happy that the second list didn't make it on too because there are even bigger things or bigger things on that list. But I do, it's not to say that I don't respect the process and the work that goes all the leadership team does put into it. I'm just really worried about that actually coming to fruition. And like I said, it's, we're going through a year where we're saying that, you know, especially the art and, these art programs are just as important to us as some of the science. Because, you know, all these programs really, depending on which kid you are, is what helps you excel in school. As we all know, students are different learners, and we're cutting that section out. And as Superintendent Gormly always says, you can only do fourth grade once, you know? So, whoa, maybe we'll put it back at the override next year, but it's over for them.
Sharon.
So I also would like to say that I absolutely respect the process, and my comments weren't meant to infer that I did not respect the process, just sharing my feelings about the individual comments. I know that this is a process that will continue. This is the first step in the process. As we go out to the schools, as we go out to the PTO meetings, we will listen to what the PTOs have to say. We will, you know, continue to craft this document that, you know, as we, as we vote on it tonight, this is, this is not to say that there won't still, there might not still be changes, as has been stated that funds may become available, and if they do, then things will change with this. I just want to address the issue of morale and what this does to morale. And Superintendent Gormly spoke about it, about the fact that we will lose teachers because teachers will see or know that their job is on the chopping block and, you know, they need to work a full-time position, they can't afford to work four days a week versus five. And so we will lose good staff members through this process, and that's very painful. And what it does to morale is a painful thing, too. So I appreciate the process. I know that it's a process that continues and...
Could I expand on what Ms. Sheridan said? As long as this is getting really difficult, what also happens, those teachers who are going to be reduced, it's January and February, get last week's globe, will start to look. It also begins, creates a culture that you and I are team teachers and I'm being let go. It impacts the other teachers, the morale. Also, if Janet Sheehan was the one staying, her workload is going to change because she's going to have more students. So it impacts not just the people who are leaving. And I will tell you, when I interview candidates, the town has a reputation, they know that we have children who come to school wanting to learn. I say there isn't a Milton Public School parent who doesn't answer your phone, your phone call within 24 hours. Do you know what that says to a prospective teacher? I tell them about parent involvement. And again, budget cuts, they'll say, when were their last budget cuts in the Milton Public Schools? You know, so it impacts even when you're doing hiring in the areas that you're not cutting. You know, and that's really, when we're able to say, we haven't had to reduce a teacher, or we haven't had to lay off teachers, that's really huge. When teachers and educators are making decisions about, so the impact of these cuts, this cut and reduction list is huge for the Milton Public Schools, the town of Milton, other teachers, but most importantly, the children who are being taught, the 4,000 children.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for $500,000 in cuts.
Second. Any further discussion? Ms. Kelly.
So what we're doing here is identifying, to the best of our ability, $500,000 of cuts at this particular moment.
Correct.
We're still gonna continue on our process, we're gonna speak with parents, we're gonna get their feedback. This list may change, just the warrant committee needs to be aware that this list may change as we progress through the process. And to the extent that if any additional funds do become available to the schools, that we would identify what would be funded.
That is correct.
And if I might add, what I explained to the teachers today about these, if additional funds become available, it goes to finance subcommittee and the full school committee. And so I explained the input, you know, tonight, I told them that this was all volatile tonight. They understand, the vote of the school committee.
On the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Ms. Sheridan, where were you?
I voted in favor of it.
Motion carries. Ford to them. Thank you. That was difficult. Okay. Veto of vendor warrants.
Well, just before our visitors leave, I just wanted to say, before we do the vendor warrants, the last two days, Powers and Sullivan have been in our office doing the annual audit of our end-of-year report that you submit every October. And I got the preliminary result this afternoon that we had a clean bill of health with no filings, with no findings, and so they were very happy with the process for the end-of-year report. So before Amy leaves, I want to thank Amy and Lisa McDonough, who are the principal workhorses on this. So it was, it was a job well done.
Amy Dexter.
Thank you.
Amy. On the warrant, vendor warrant is number 29, dated tomorrow, or, yeah, still tomorrow, 1/15, for $466,001.21.
Sharon, what was the number again? I'll move to approve vendor warrant 29 in the amount of $466,001. How many cents?
21.
21 cents.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Zulus, seconded by Ms. Kelly. All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Staying? 401.
As we, at the moment, don't have another school committee meeting for three weeks or so, there will be a warrant in that intervening time. I will get in touch with you when I need you to come in and take a look at it. Because I won't be able to wait three-plus weeks unless there's another meeting in the middle.
Here, Kelly has her hand up.
Ms. Kelly, sorry.
That's okay. So I want to ask, I checked on the website today, none of our FY16 budget documents are online. So I think, especially as we're moving into the public discussion time and we're gonna have an open hearing, it makes sense to make sure that those are on there.
Yes.
As well as, I think the first quarterly report isn't on there either. So just updating the FY16, just so that if people want to start taking a look at it, they can. Did you also say the advancement budget? Because that presentation isn't... It's, all of it should be in that budget tab so that anybody who wants to look at any of the things we've presented, et cetera. I think even warrant committee information, you know, questions.
Every time we leave a meeting, the next day, I know every presentation, but it must be under school committee meetings.
It might be under budget. We'll check.
So there's a tab under school committee that's called budget.
We'll take care of it tomorrow.
Details in it are FY15, they're not FY16, so...
You'd have to know the date of the advancement or the date of the budget.
Exactly. It's difficult to...
Policies Subcommittee?
Well, if, if, if the members, I think it's important, well, we have two policies to look at. One is cash management, it's a second reading, we would, we would...
Don't let Ms. Padera get you flustered.
Well, well, I wanna, I wanna respect the wishes and needs of all the members, and the hour is late.
That's a tall order, Mr. Zulus.
Certainly is.
That's a tall order.
And maybe if we, if we could, maybe if we had a little Van Halen, that would help us, but... So we have two policies that we would put before you. The second, the first is cash management, that is a second reading, and that would be, that would be for adoption tonight. I think in terms of timing, that is important for the administration. The second is an amendment to the background check policy. We could probably defer that, given the hour, if, if the members would like to, so. But that's not my decision, that's not my decision, that's my, that's my suggestion if, given the late hour.
Number's going up.
All right.
I think that's deferred.
I heard you on over there. I think that's deferred. All right. So cash management is important. It is in your packets, it hasn't changed since last week. The only thing that we talked about in Policies Subcommittee was putting, and we discussed this last week, putting on the school committee calendar sometime in June, a date for the administration to make a recommendation on the regulations that would be, that would be subsumed under this cash management policy. So that was the only change. Otherwise, we'd ask for a completion of the second reading and adoption of the new cash management policy.
Is that a motion?
Um...
Yes is the answer.
Yes, so move. I just didn't want to presume to make it myself, but I'll make it, sure.
On the motion. All in favor? It's unanimous.
All right.
I believe we're adjourned.
That was fast.
Wow.